Okay, welcome to the first hearing of the committee's inquiry into the Ethical Clothing Extended Responsibility Scheme 2005. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Aora Nation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. And I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Dr. Jo Mager, I'm Chair of the Modern Slavery Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants, and I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome, Mr. Nossa and Mr. Amerasano. Thank you for taking, making the time to give evidence today. Could we start with each witness either swearing an oath or making an affirmation, starting with yourself, Mr. Nossa?
Thank you very much, Chair. I, Egon Nossa, swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Mr. Amerasano?
Thank you. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to start by making a short statement, Mr. Nossa?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Before making the statement, I'd like to formally give an apology from our co-author of the submission, Mr. John Owen, who is quite severely ill with the flu and was unable to make it despite his best intentions. So he asks for his apology to be heard by the committee. And also two very brief housekeeping matters. We came across a few typo matters in our submission. We've corrected them and provided copies to the secretarial staff, who I understand have distributed the typo-corrected copies to you. And we're also happy to provide them to be put up on the, those typo-corrected, the typo-corrected copies to be delivered, to be put up on the website of the committee as well, too. And the second and last matter concerns the appendices to the submission. And I understand, Chair, that's in the hands of you and the committee as to how you're going to deal with the specificities of that.
That's right. I understand the changes to the submission were important but not extensive. And it was around the spelling of the word complementary in a couple of locations.
That's correct.
So that it reflects the meaning of, fills out or is akin to, rather than is complementary of, or praising of. So thank you for that. And we've circulated copies of that to the committee. Thank you. And in relation to your request to have the publication, with the exception of some clarification around documents that may be commercial in confidence and the removal of some photos, the committee has agreed to that. But thank you very much, and we hope that Mr. Owen is, recovers quickly. Mr. Nossa, why don't you proceed with your submission?
Thank you, thank you very much, Chair. Firstly, I'd like to briefly introduce myself as a person who was previously employed by the Textile Clothing and Footwear Union of Australia, and in the capacity as chief advocate. And in that capacity, I've been involved with the development, from its very conceptualisation and inception of the scheme, which we refer to as the TCF mandatory retailer supplier code. And from its inception all the way through its development with the department, its ultimate proclamation, and then utilising it once it was proclaimed to achieve particular results in relation to exploited workers in supply chains. I'm going to take this opportunity in this opening statement to refer to, in fact, read briefly from a statement made at the governing assembly of the ILO, the United Nations Agency, in 2016, where for the first time a committee on decent work in global supply chains was established. And on the record of that proceeding was the following comment about "The obligation of states to pass laws and regulations which regulate the conduct of enterprises under their jurisdiction, whenever, wherever the alleged harms occur", which we think is particularly relevant to the issue of modern slavery, as well as the domestic regulation that the code itself undertook. And the person making the statement was Catalin Pasheer, the Worker Spokesperson at that particular committee. She said that "The idea of so regulating is not a far-fetched idea but can be realised in practice, as can be shown by referring to the good practice of Australia, a federal state where cross-jurisdictional regulation has been adopted by some of its states to regulate binding obligations upon buyer-retailers in the clothing and footwear industry, that ensure that responsibility is taken until the very bottom of the chain. In Australia, clothing products are made in manufacturing supply chains which supply those products to the retailers of clothing. Typically, a clothing retailer will contract with a first-tier fashion house with few in-house employees, which will then further outsource the work order down to a number of smaller businesses, until the work ends up being actually performed in a number of small backyard sweatshops or by individual home-based clothing workers, often migrant female workers, as my mother was, a female immigrant outworker when my family came to Australia. One of these particular Australian states being New South Wales, first legislated mandatory legal obligations upon all retailers who sell clothing in that state, as long as the clothing has been manufactured anywhere in Australia, whether or not the clothing was manufactured in that state of New South Wales. Among other things, these binding legal obligations regulate the prime supply contract between the retailers, who are operating within the state of New South Wales, and all of the retailer's first-tier suppliers. Even if all of these first-tier suppliers operate outside of the borders of New South Wales, the retailer's presence within the New South Wales borders provides to the state legislature the necessary jurisdictional nexus permitting the state of New South Wales to legislate to regulate the contracting practices of the retailer. Thus, a cross-jurisdictional impact can be achieved upon the first-tier suppliers and through them, the entire supply chain, even when all of the Australian manufacturing activity by all of the suppliers takes place outside of the borders of the state which has legislated these obligations. And the reason I just dwelled on that for a moment is, one, the committee can perhaps see the model relevance of that to provisions that operate outside of broader boundaries, such as the borders of the Commonwealth of Australia. I go on to finish the statement that was made at the committee in the ILO. A quote, "The obligations upon the retailers regard matters such as providing a list of their first-tier clothing suppliers, details including prices of each supply contract with each first-tier supplier, the obligation to include in each supply contract the obligation to disclose all locations where the work will be ultimately performed, whether in a factory or at a home, sanctioned with the termination of the contract." To clarify that, that's saying that there is an ultimate fallback for any recalcitrant party who decides to thumb their nose at the obligations that they're faced. It's not a first recourse to such a termination of contract. And finally, the spokesperson said, "One important effect of the obligations is that the system permits the union", which is one of the two regulators in this strategic co-enforcement model, "to track down the previously invisible workforce of sweatshop workers and home-based workers." And the spokesperson said, "The result is remarkable. Supply chain by supply chain, the union has been making each of these workers visible to the regulators and has ensured that each worker is both paid their legal entitlements and provided with legal minimum working conditions, often for the first time." I think that statement by the Worker Spokesperson sums up the scope of the code and how it can be used. In the, and finishing off my opening statement, in the submission that we've provided, we hope to illustrate that the code is in no way intended to supplant the role of the relevant awards, specifically the federal award, in setting the minimum standards. If you go to the very first page of the scheme in the objectives, it states very clearly that the function of the code is to ensure that those minimum standards are not avoided and to provide the mechanism by which the flow of work can be tracked down in order to determine that people are being provided with their legal minimum working standards. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Nossa. I'll start, I guess, with a general question. I'd recognise that the work done before and then at the introduction and the years immediately after the introduction of the, of the scheme was probably groundbreaking, actually, and very significant. But there has been the suggestion that in more recent years, the scheme has fallen into disuse and may not be that relevant, particularly with regard to changes in industrial relations legislation with respect to the federal and state governments. Just wondering if you might comment on its current relevance and any potential there might be for its use to be extended?
Thank you, Chair. I'm very glad for the opportunity to address that very precise point, or I should say, two points. First being the disuse of the code, and the second being whether there's still an ongoing relevance given changes in legislative frameworks, specifically between the federal and the state jurisdictions. So I might address that second issue first about the irrelevance given the referral of IR powers to the federal jurisdiction. I'm in a position to be a resource for the committee if that's of any use, because I've been involved in the process all the way through, and that was also at the design stage of the code. So if you turn to the code's objectives page, you'll see that there's a reference there that the intention of the code is to avoid, oh, sorry, to prevent avoidance of compliance with all relevant awards, not just the Clothing Trades State Award. So even in the circumstance, which I'm not necessarily prepared to concede, but even the circumstance that the Clothing Trades State Award had absolutely no existence, then the code still applies in relation to preventing avoidance of the federal awards. And in relation to that, I draw the committee's attention to the definitions clause of the code, and in particular, the definition of relevant industrial instrument. So I'm now referring to the definitions clause on, which is clause five, and I'm referring to the definition of relevant industrial instrument, which reads as follows, "Relevant industrial instrument includes a relevant award which is defined as the state award, or any federal or interstate award or industrial instrument that regulates the conditions of employment of outworkers and applies to the performance of work by an outworker." So from the very beginning and very explicitly, this code was designed to ensure or to act against avoidance of the federal award and define broadly without a specific name for the award, knowing that the names of the awards will change through a succession of different award formats. I note also for the committee that the, later today, you'll be addressed by the Senior National Industrial Officer of the successor union to the Textile Clothing and Footwear Union, Ms. Vivian Wilds. And I draw the attention of the committee to the submission made by that union, which calls for the ongoing retention of the code, and in a sense, it's being brought back to full life with some minor tweaks. And they suggest explicitly naming the current federal award, and we think there's great merit in the submission of the union, including in respect to that particular matter. So very explicitly, we're saying that the scheme, the mandatory code, is a valid, ongoing legislative instrument with great practical utility. And the fact that the bulk of the outworkers whose protection is being sought are now covered by federal award provisions in no way changes the relevance of the code, which is designed to prevent the avoidance of that particular award. And now addressing, and thank you for your patience, the issue of falling into disuse. I think it's absolutely true that the code is, has far less implementation in the preceding, let's say, decade or so, as opposed to the first decade of its operation. And the reasons for that were actually addressed in one of the other submissions by the other parties, where they speculated that it might have been for a reason as simple as parties, people having moved on, which was exactly the case. Mr. Owen, who's unable to attend today, and I, were both central to the development of the code and then its application after proclamation. I finished with the union in 2008 to basically assist with the full-time care of my frail elderly parents who've since passed away. Mr. Owen was the final national president of the Textile Clothing and Footwear Union at the time of its amalgamation into the successor union that's represented by Ms. Wilds this afternoon. So the two people who were most centrally involved did move on. But can I say, in relation to the issue of disuse, even in this period of disuse, the fact that it's, the scheme is still a valid legislative instrument has still had a useful effect for the following reasons, which are, is an elaboration of something that's in the submission. I mean, the submission basically from myself and Mr. Amerasano, Mr. Owen, is there are two core functions of the code. The first is to prevent avoidance of the relevant award provisions, including the federal award provisions, which set the minimum standards for those exploited outworkers. And the second function can be described as a two-tier characteristic of this regulatory model. I mean, if you want to look at this code, you can think of it in broad as being a strategic co-enforcement model involving both the New South Wales Department and the union regulator, so a co-enforcement regulatory model. And the two-tier aspect is, arises from the provision, which is also embodied in that objective of the code on its very first page, acknowledging that there's a far-reaching voluntary scheme, which was known at the time of the code's formulation as the Home Workers' Code of Practice, and which is now known in its successor manifestation as Ethical Clothing Australia. And the second key function of the code was in essence to provide a very strong incentive to relevant commercial actors, being specifically the retailer oligopoly that dominates the clothing supply chains in domestic manufacturing Australia, and their first-tier suppliers. A message to them that if they become signatory and accredited to that voluntary code, now Ethical Clothing Australia, then they will no longer be bound by the strictures of the mandatory code. And certainly within the first decade, and I think this will be borne out by looking at the statistics for the numbers being accredited to the voluntary code, which was then the Home Workers' Code of Practice, shot up after the mandatory code was imposed in New South Wales. Because all national retailers, by definition, operate in New South Wales. They found themselves in a situation where the provisions of the mandatory code gave them a good incentive to become signatory to, or accredited to, in the case of manufacturers, and compliant with that voluntary code. They did so, and they decided that, well, if we're doing it in New South Wales, we might as well do it around the whole country, it just makes commercial sense. So it's a very long-winded answer by way of explanation to say that the two-tier feature of this code model has been ongoing even after Mr. Owen and I and other relevant people left the union. If you'll indulge me for one moment more, and I'm really grateful for your patience about this, but there's so much information, I'm trying to really give the most relevant possible. In one of your, one of the appendices to the submission, which is Appendix 10, the Clothing Supply Chain Strategy Presentation from 2009, in the last two, in a sense, slides of that presentation, there's a particular slide that talks about results of the use of the code in relation to specific supply chains, which are quite remarkable in the sense that prior to the utilisation of the mandatory code, there was a certain number of workers admitted to in the records of the various commercial parties down through the supply chain. You might say that number's X. But by the time that the supply chain strategy, which was built on the mandatory code, had been implemented, then you were getting numbers ranging from twice as many workers through to four to five to six times as many workers being admitted, being put on the record, and being required to be paid their minimum entitlements for the first time often in their life. So while the code, yes, has fallen into relative disuse, the fact that it's still been a valid legislative instrument has helped to keep up the numbers in the voluntary scheme. And we are hopeful that the resuscitation of the operation of the code, and we recommend the Ms. Wilds' submission later today as being the model for how to resuscitate, and happy to go into more details if you'd like. And finally, in relation to the resuscitation of the code, because this is the Modern Slavery Committee, we see great value in liaison between the union regulator and hopefully the departmental regulator utilising the ongoing mandatory code, working together with the Anti-Slavery Commissioner. But it should be noted that the specialist expertise in how to utilise the mandatory code really lays with that union regulator. Even during the period of disuse, I draw the attention of the committee to the submission of Ethical Clothing Australia, which refers to a service agreement between Ethical Clothing Australia and the union, whereby the union provides the resources for a compliance team to go down through supply chains. So even during the period of disuse of the mandatory code, the union has still been working with the voluntary scheme structure to drill down through supply chains. The legislative instrument has still maintained its validity, and we are hopeful that it'll be resuscitated.
Thanks, Mr. Nossa. I'm going to now go to Mr., to Dr. Kane for the next question.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Nossa and Mr. Amerasano, for coming along and for your submission. Ms. Nossa, I wanted to just clarify, just for the purposes of the whole committee, a couple of the points that you've already made. To be clear, when the code came into force was 2000, around 2005.
Correct.
So at that stage, for those of us engaged in industrial relations at the time, it was quite clear that the state jurisdiction was not going to look the same, and that indeed there was going to be quite a shift to the national system. So, so just being explicit about it, that was something that you, as one of the designers and developers of this scheme, you were aware of that, and that fed into this idea that, that the code was constructed to withstand any such change?
Very much so.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that. I wanted to get a little bit more from you. I know for you it's, it's bread and butter, but again, for the purposes of the committee, why is it so important that this code includes retailers? So often when we're talking about industrial relations instruments, we're looking at, you know, where the rubber hits the road in terms of who pays the worker. Why is it so important that the code then and potentially in the future includes retailers?
I'm very glad you asked that question, and we've, we've been very careful to try and not overload the committee with too much information, but quite a lot of it's contained in those voluminous appendices, and I hope to draw your attention to some aspects of them that you'll find relevant for this consideration. In answering your question, I draw your attentions, attention to Appendix 1, which was a, an Ethical Clothing Code of Practice developed by the then-minister under the auspices of the Ethical Clothing Trades Council. And that particular code of practice was actually signed off by all the members of the Ethical Clothing Trades Council, representing all of the six stakeholders that were invited to be members of that. And in that, at the beginning of that appendix, sorry, referred to Appendix 1, there's actually a statement by the minister, who was John Delabosca at the time, as to the role of the code of practice for retailers, and drawing attention to the fact that, quote, "These major retailers have recognised that a truly viable clothing industry in this country must be based on quality, efficiency, and fair labour practices", and that this then comes to the point of the role of the retailers in the supply chain. I don't think it's, it's a secret that the retailer oligopoly in Australia exercises very substantial commercial power over their supply chains. And indeed, it's interesting that we're meeting today, because I think it's now, the, this issue has proliferated throughout so many industries, including in the agricultural sector in relation to farmer suppliers, for example, as well as workers working in rural industries, that that commercial power, with it comes responsibility. And that power is exercised through the prime retailer supply contracts. And in relation to this, I, I just want to inform the committee that I've, I've worked very carefully with those major retailers throughout this entire process. And they were explicitly endorsing the adoption of this mandatory code in order to ensure, in fact, even if I can switch from retailers to go to business in general, the whole issue of fighting exploitation has not been an issue of some kind of antagonism towards business. It's a recognition that ethical business that wants to do the right thing and make sure that the law is respected in relation to what happens in their supply chains face the problem in a competitive market of being undercut by unethical competitors who are basing their competition on breaking the law. Or on benefiting from breaking the law. And this then gets back to the issue of retailers.
Yep.
Because those retail, prime supplier contracts that I was referring to in a sense, insulate the retailer from the direct act of exploitation, but provide the opportunity for commercially benefiting from lower prices achieved through breaking the law in the supply chain. We've got no problem with price competition on other grounds, like innovation, for example, quicker turnaround time, quality improvements. But we have a very, very real problem with competition based on illegality, exploitation, and breaking the law.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Nossa. I'm trying to be a bit quick because other members, I've got lots of questions, but other members probably do as well. I just wanted to ask you about, one of the things we're looking at is, you know, this is what we've, we've had. Are there the lessons or things that we can learn from this or potentially CDUs elsewhere? And in the journal article authored by herself and others, you talk about other industries in New South Wales that could potentially, well, other industries that could potentially benefit from this type of scheme. And I wondered if you could talk a bit more about that?
Sure. And in, in addressing this, can I say that the phrase that keeps recurring throughout this discussion about the code is the phrase "supply chain"? It should be noted that the phenomenon, the phenomena of supply chains is actually a subset of a broader category of contract networks. So other types of contract networks are, for example, labour hire arrangements, franchising arrangements involving small businesses, digital platform gig economy arrangements, which are not exactly the same as supply chains, but are networks of contracting arrangements where powerful commercial parties can exercise that commercial power to socially negative consequences. And once again, I think that's no secret, if you look at the debate, the discussion about social platforms, such as social media and suppliers, such as the various corporations like Amazon and Uber. So in relation to other industries, I'm suggesting that in addition to what you read from that piece of scholarship, there's even broader application beyond supply chains to other types of contract networks. And that in a sense, there's a generic model that's, has a, it seeds in this mandatory code, whereby that commercial power being exercised is being recognised very openly and is being harnessed for public policy ends in addition to the private commercial ends for which it's been harmless. I mean, for example, with supply chains, that commercial power has been utilised by the powerful players, such as the retailer oligopoly, in order to achieve benefits in price, quality, and turnaround time. The model that's being put before you and that's been embodied in the mandatory code is that the legislature plays a role, and I'm happy to say in New South Wales, that New South Wales has been the leading legislature in this respect historically, and frequently on a, on a bipartisan basis that is supported by virtually all parties across the political spectrum. And that model of harnessing the commercial power in those supply chains can be therefore adapted, to directly address your question now. For example, the question of horticultural work, where often the workers, instead of being predominantly female immigrant women sewing at home... where often the workers, instead of being predominantly female immigrant women sewing at home, tends to be people on various temporary and insecure visa arrangements, working in sort of backpacker hostel type of situations. Often, I think there's been a lot of work done, for example, by Professor Forsyth's inquiry in Victoria into the labour hire and other situations that shows that various unscrupulous commercial operators at the bottom of the supply chain have been happy to grotesquely exploit those insecure visa holders, often robbing them outright of their wages entirely. Thus, our suggestion is that the range of industries to which this model could be applied is very wide, ranging from horticulture through to, and if I can address one that's probably no news to yourself, Ms. Kane, the cleaning industry, where I draw the attention of the committee to the fact that there's an excellent voluntary scheme arrangement called the Cleaning Accountability Framework, but which suffers from the same problem that the Ethical Clothing Australia or Home Workers' Code of Practice faced in clothing, which was that parties that didn't sign up to the voluntary arrangement could, in a sense, benefit from exploitation further down the supply chain and undercut their more ethical competitors. So I think in the area of cleaning, and there's a great deal of scholarship, which I have a number of copies here, including one by Dr. Rawling and yourself and others, multi-stakeholder frameworks for rectification of non-compliance, including supply chains, the case of the Cleaning Accountability Framework. Other industries, and I won't belabor the point, would also include potentially construction in relation to residential cottage building. At one stage in my life, when I was a student, I worked on building sites in residential construction, and the things I saw there were not a million miles away from the things I've been describing in horticulture, cleaning, and clothing.
Thank you. I've got another question, but if there's others.
I just want to check, Mr. Amarassano, do you want to make a statement?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Were you happy to keep going with Ms. Kane?
Yeah, you go with one more. I've got two that I'll jump in on. You go, and then I'll come.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And I'm not sure if this is for you, Mr. Nosar, or for you, Mr. Amarassano. We obviously engage closely with the Anti-Slavery Commissioner, and he has provided a comprehensive and very interesting submission to the committee as well. Part of his submission is, talks about the, and also I should note his submission is co-authored by Justine Conybeau. Part of the submission was about the fact that the world of supply chain regulation has very much moved on since the early 2000s, aided by people like yourself, Mr. Nosar, and the type of work you've done. But that now that we have sort of a proliferation of international codes, other mandates that have come out that perhaps, you know, a bit like the federal jurisdiction argument, that perhaps that might have superseded the, at least the efficacy of the code and that it probably needs to be taken into account, those kinds of developments. Would either of you have a comment?
I hesitate to monopolize, perhaps before Mr. Amarassano, I might just address that particular point. Can I also draw the committee's attention to the fact that Mr. Amarassano is explicitly interested in the issue of adaptation, as all of us who've had interesting occupational backgrounds. Firstly, Mr. Amarassano is an excellent, a very highly qualified lawyer himself, with a master's degree in law as well, but found himself at one stage working as a food delivery bike rider. So he's in a position to talk about the adaptation of this kind of model to gig economy situations. But just to address this particular point, because I did go through the submissions in great detail, including that particular submission, I found that the discussion about how things have moved on seemed to lack one particular aspect in its analysis, and this is perhaps unintentional. It didn't address, in relation to those various instruments, such as the ones that came from the Sustainable Development Goals and the various international business conventions, didn't address the extent to which these can be practically enforceable as opposed to being merely guiding. Because the issue that I addressed earlier in relation to the voluntary code being Ethical Clothing Australia in the case of the clothing industry, or the Cleaning Accountability Framework in the case of the cleaning industry, is always the same. But the ethical parties will feel impelled to sign up to such voluntary guidance arrangements. The unethical ones will be happy to benefit from the commercially competitive consequences of exploitation and lawbreaking.
Mr. Nosar, if I could just summarize that. So basically what you're saying is, without some kind of regulatory mandate, what actually these codes do is facilitate unethical actors exploiting a situation where good businesses want to do the right thing.
And even worse, they then place those ethical businesses under such pressure, and I've observed this in my dealings in a variety of industries, including internationally in the transport industry, the ethical ones are forced against their will to start to benefit from those exploitative and illegal practices just in order to survive against those competitors. So it's even worse than just the unethical ones benefiting. It drives the whole market into benefiting, and in fact, a culture of non-compliance with the legal minimum requirements.
Mr. Amarassano, did you?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the point that my colleague Igor made, and is that a mandatory code, even if it does nothing, at least it will make businesses to fall into the voluntary code and in that way protecting ethical businesses' practices that want to do the right thing. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both, and thank you, Mr. Nosar, for taking us through all of that. I guess I wanted to focus a little bit on the, and follow up on the question of the chair around the idea of how we might extend the powers of this, and particularly, I guess, question where we have any accountability or responsibility for ensuring that this is being utilized. Because I think we would all agree that there are still outworkers and workers that are being exploited that are not covered and protected by what is this code and this scheme in New South Wales and beyond. And so I guess my question goes to three parts. The first is, it's all well and good to say there are certain individuals within the trade union movement who have moved on or experts in the area, but who in government is supposed to be responsible for this? Where is the department, the people, the accountability that sits within government to ensure that this is functioning as it should have been? And then I guess the second part of that question is, where is the accountability in terms of whether it is being adhered to, used, applied, and where do you think that should sit? And then I guess going to those two points and then extending it to other potential risks in other workplaces. What could we be looking at in terms of extending and expanding what was a very strong and groundbreaking intention into other kind of areas of risk for workers in the state?
Well, could I address your question by focusing on the practical?
Please.
Because that's where all this came from. I mean, I was hired by the union originally in 1987. It seems a long time ago now, because the award provisions had been introduced by His Honour Senior Deputy President Joe Riordan, groundbreaking award provisions into the federal award, and the workload of the union had increased whereby they needed industrial officer staff at the branch level to then introduce it into counterpart state awards then. And so from, I was involved from the very, very beginning in looking at those supply chains and finding the problems in them and trying to address those problems in a practical way. So one of the reasons for the code structure to be a strategic co-enforcement model was that this wasn't an attempt by the union to somehow monopolize the situation. The union, even in the days when I was there, had very limited resources. I mean, its money came from those women and men who were working primarily in factories, very hard hours, and paying the amounts they could for the union dues. There weren't rivers of gold to fund this. And one of the reasons for coming up with really efficient focused strategies was because there weren't the resources to do anything else. And that's why that supply chain strategy, which is set out in Appendix 10, was developed so that a small number of people, but who had the expertise, could achieve these kinds of practical results that I was referring to before. Now, it was hoped that the department at the time would have used their share of the powers. I'm not really aware of the department ever having used its powers. And to be honest, the department faced exactly the same problems the union did in relation to, as resourcing was being reduced across the public service, the size of the inspectorate, which was already inadequate for the sweatshop sector already, was being reduced further. So I don't really particularly blame the department for the fact it didn't utilize the code, but as far as I know, it really didn't utilize the code. To address how that can be remedied, and trying to be as practical as I can here, could I suggest that, and following on from an aspect of the submission that the union will be putting, is that we've seen with the voluntary code the benefits and value of service agreements with those that have expertise to implement these functions. And that I'm suggesting, on behalf of myself and Mr. Amarassano and Mr. Owen, that that might be a very practical way forward to enter into an agreement with the union regulator, not open-ended, not for, you know, humongous amounts of money, but so that the union is in a position to be able to second people to help, in a sense, train departmental officers on how to strategically use these resources. And I'm going to make a footnote to that that may be of relevance because also this now relates to international issues. This model of harnessing the power of the most commercially powerful actors to achieve public good rather than merely just private commercial advantage is not a model confined to Australia. I draw your attention to the path-breaking work by one of the leading scholars in relation to the issue of the fragmentation of work and workplaces, Professor David Wiel, W E I L, formerly at the Harvard University, John F. Kennedy School of Governance, and now playing a key role at Brandeis University, who, among his many other accomplishments, was actually appointed administrator of the Inspectorate, which is known as the Wages and Hours Division of the Department of Labor and the Federal Government of the United States under the Obama administration. There was an attempt by the Biden administration to appoint him, but some of the parties who I think are influenced by various commercial lobbies spiked that happening, and he didn't manage to get appointed the second time. During his work, and this is, his work is, by the way, cited in some excellent scholarship in Australia by Dr. Tess Hardy, who's a co-director of the Centre for Employment Relations at the University of Melbourne, and in particular her article about who should be held liable for non-payment of minimum conditions. I can give you the citation for that. Dr. Hardy analyzed the experience with the United States. There was a power in the United States, which we don't have here, under federal legislation known colloquially as the hot goods provisions in the United States, which gave power to the federal government to seize goods that had been manufactured without compliance with relevant laws, which really meant that the federal government had powers which weren't utilized ever since, very extensively since that provision was passed, which I think it was originally passed in 1938. But Dr. Wiel resuscitated that provision, and I'm citing that in this particular context where we're looking for resuscitation of the mandatory code.
Yeah.
That what looked like a defunct provision, which was a provision that gave power over those commercially powerful actors to compel those actors to assist the inspectorate to drill down through the supply chains, locate the sweatshops, because it was in relation to the textile clothing and footwear industry, and come across a huge number of issues of non-compliance, but with a strategic perspective, not of punishing, but of, if necessary, dragging reluctant black market operators into a culture of compliance with the law.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Nosar. I'm aware of the time. Mr. Amarassano, I'd be keen to hear your thoughts about how we might look to extending the act into other areas, sorry, extending the code to apply to other areas.
Yes, so I'm National Legal Officer at the Australian Manufacturing Workers' Union, and I got interested in the code for the exact reason that I was looking away on how to expand it in the manufacturing sector. I've been doing some research and find out that TCF supply chain share most of the characteristic also with the manufacturing industry, which I'm working on. And I'm beginning to start to look away on how that can be expanded also to the manufacturing industry. I want the committee to know that both manufacturing and TCF industry share some of the complex supply chains in which a powerful entity at the top dictate the condition on how the work is done at the bottom of the supply chain by the workers. They also share reliance on low-wage labor and stop contracting practices as well. So extensive stop contracting is common in both industries. And also there's the same kind of feeling or of pressure for cost reduction. And so those, when a supply chain share kind of those characteristics, it's, I think there is a way in which the mandatory code can actually be extended to supply chain that share most, if not all, the characteristic with the TCF.
Could I have a follow-up just on that?
We're just running out of time, actually.
Can I just say, I'll put it on the record so then we know, but if you wanted to follow up, Mr. Nosar, and provide additional information on that, I'm happy for you both to take any of the questions that we've asked on notice and provide additional details on those, and then that way we've got it on the record, so you have the opportunity to do that, because I'm aware of the clock.
Absolutely.
Chair's going to step in.
Yes, just want to check if Mr. Bozak or Ms. Ayad have any questions at this point.
I do just have one question as an extension of my colleagues', and it's for yourself, Mr. Nosar. I'm just interested to know more about the compliance measures which are enforced and included in the code, and actually, how successful are they in practice?
Well, to be, once again, talking completely practically, the incentive function of the code to give an incentive to sign up to the voluntary system, in my personal experience, has never failed. So that every time we approached a particular supply chain and explained to them what were the provisions in the mandatory code and the alternative in the voluntary system, we didn't come across one commercial party that didn't say, "Well, in that case, we're going to opt for the, becoming accredited and signatory to that voluntary system." So I'm not in a position to know how, what kind of experience there is in implementing those particular provisions of the mandatory code, because every time we've come across a party, they've elected to go into the voluntary one. But in the abstract, could I note that those provisions were developed by the departmental drafting officer, who did an excellent job, I have to say, in relation to the code, to be practically realizable both for the state departmental inspectorate and for the union.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Nosar. At that point, I'd like to thank you for your evidence, and we'll contact you in relation to any questions on notice. I might ask you to withdraw, and we'll move to our next witnesses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr Bozma and Dr Wright, thank you for making the time to give evidence. Now, could each witness, please, starting from my left, state their name and position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation, starting with yourself, Dr Bozma.
So my name is Martin Bozma. I'm an associate professor at the University of Sydney, and I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Dr Bozma. Dr Wright?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Chris Wright. I'm also an associate professor at the University of Sydney, and I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thanks, Dr Wright. Would you like both, either of you make a brief opening statement of a couple of minutes for each? Perhaps with yourself, Dr Bozma?
Sure, and I'll be making a statement on both our behalves.
Okay.
Yep. So we are very grateful today to speak about the Ethical Clothing Extended Responsibility Scheme of 2005. This scheme, which is currently underutilised, stands, in our opinion, as a vital tool in the enforcement of labour standards within New South Wales textile clothing and footwear industry, also TCF industry. The workforce in the TCF sector, as outlined in our submission, is particularly vulnerable to labour standards, non-compliance, and exploitation. The industry predominantly employs workers who are culturally and linguistically diverse, with many facing significant barriers such as limited English proficiency and precarious employment conditions. This demographic profile inherently places these workers at higher risk of modern slavery-like practices. The scheme is an important example of regulatory innovation that plays a vital role in ensuring business compliance with employment regulations and ensures TCF workers receive the wages and conditions that they are legally entitled to. Current modern slavery legislation, such as the Modern Slavery Act 2018, relies heavily on transparency measures. However, there's growing recognition of the need to shift towards due diligence and more proactive enforcement to effectively mitigate the risks of modern slavery. The Ethical Clothing Extended Responsibility Scheme provides an avenue to facilitate this by ensuring great accountability, greater accountability and transparency throughout the supply chain. By leveraging the scheme, we can enhance oversight and enforcement, ensuring that even smaller entities and subcontractors are held to high labour standards. This approach complements existing legislation and addresses the gaps where risk of abuse is most acute. In conclusion, strengthening the application of the scheme is imperative to protect vulnerable workers and uphold ethical standards in the TCF industry. We urge the committee to consider the recommendations for promoting supply chain mapping, creating a comprehensive supply chain database, and exploring the extension of the scheme to other high-risk industries. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr Bozma. I might just start with a fairly general question. And obviously, this is the Modern Slavery Committee, so we are interested in the application perhaps to instances of modern slavery. You've indicated the possible applicability of this scheme more broadly. I wonder if you could just expand on that a bit, and how the Anti-Slavery Commissioner might participate in that.
Sure, I'm very happy to. So in effect, the current modern slavery legislation relies on transparency. But this transparency is not necessarily very strategic. So what happens is that entities that are required to, and some do so voluntarily, report on the risks in their supply chains with regards to modern slavery and the measures they are taking to, I suppose, address those risks. But it's a bit unclear who exactly the conferring public is. So who is it exactly that's reading these statements and acting on these statements? Now, what legislation tells us, and the guidelines accompanying legislation tells us, is that businesses themselves, as well as consumers, as well as investors are taking note and I suppose are adjusting their behaviour accordingly, choosing to do business with the ones that produce better modern slavery statements and avoiding those that don't. Now, from the evidence that we've seen federally, but also in the UK, there's limited, I suppose, empirical data that supports that those stakeholders or those conferring publics are acting on that basis. Now, this brings us to the scheme. What the scheme does is, I suppose, look at this type of transparency in a much more strategic way. And effectively, what it does is provide transparency on very select data, data points which are very helpful in assessing whether exploitation is taking place and whether legal entitlements are being paid. But also, it provides that data to a very select group of stakeholders. So by providing that to, in this case, the union, but also possibly New South Wales Industrial Relations, but also, as you mentioned, the Office of the New South Wales Anti-Slavery Commissioner. We have obviously conferring publics that are not abstract investors or abstract people in the market who may or may not change their behaviour on the basis of these disclosures. We have obviously a regulator, a union, and I suppose in those capacities, and an anti-slavery commissioner who have a very direct interest and the capacity to act on that information and to leverage that information in order to, I suppose, get better outcomes for workers. And in that sense, the scheme itself is very complimentary to the work that the Office of James Cocaine is doing, but also what New South Wales Industrial Relations could be doing.
So, in essence, the current framework around modern slavery is we've got these statements that are made, and no one reads them. I mean, not no one reads them, but they're not the sort of thing the general public goes to and makes decisions around products on. And you're saying that an alternative approach, I'm just trying to encapsulate this, an alternative approach is to collect the data, but actually make it more specific and to specific interested parties?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I might now go to Ms Kane, Dr Kane, for the next question.
I know that both of you, I know you work quite well, and I know that both of you would have been listening with interest to the previous witnesses. And I guess the first thing I wanted to do is get a response to that evidence, particularly, I think, with the Chair reminding us again that we've got a modern slavery focus. So I guess maybe starting with you, Dr Wright. The supply chain work that you've done, how is that structure and those characteristics of supply chains, how is that relevant to us thinking about modern slavery? And what are the kind of leverage points available if we're trying to look at ways that mitigate it?
Thanks, Dr Kane. So, at the risk of being a bit too academic, I would just like to return the committee's attention to evidence provided by Mr Nossa around the concept of fishered work. That is a term coined by Professor David Weil at Brandeis University. And this is a term that basically means that the business or entity that employs a worker isn't the one who controls how the work is performed. And the reason for that is because of commercial pressure imposed through a contracted or networked business structure. That basically means that the employer has limited control over the work and the conditions as well. So, you know, an example might be a retailer who engages a contractor who then employs a worker. But the terms of the commercial contract imposed by the retailer don't allow decent work principles to be upheld or legally compliant conditions to be adhered to. And this, I think, is a very relevant point because in recent decades, we have seen fishered work arrangements proliferate across labour markets in Australia and many other countries as well. And that's definitely the case in textile clothing and footwear, but it's also the case in construction, in business services like cleaning and security, like in the supply chains that support retail, the retail sector, food, fruit and vegetables, and the like. So, this, the model that the code incorporates reflects international best practice. It does so for two reasons. Because it provides accountability for what David Weil calls the lead firm, the firm that at the top of the supply chain, like the retailer, who through their commercial power basically controls the work that's being performed by everyone within the supply chain. And also because of the monitoring and enforcement that it provides to empowered independent agents like trade unions or like government agencies. So, it's a model that I think is very well designed to support the work of this committee around modern slavery, given that modern slavery, and Associate Professor Bozma can talk to this more than I can, embodies those characteristics of fishered work. It's one of the central features that lies at the heart of modern slavery. So I might leave my answer to that question there and pass to Associate Professor Bozma for further comment.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. No, that's absolutely true. And I think, and thank you for, I suppose, scheduling Mr Nossa before we appeared because he obviously gave such an excellent, I suppose, outline of how the scheme operates. But as my colleague Chris mentioned, a lot of the characteristics that make people vulnerable to modern slavery we see in the TCF industry. But as he rightfully points out, we see that particularly happen in these fishered workplaces where, I suppose, people quite often fall through the cracks due to, I suppose, the opacity of those supply chains. And this brings me to a point that I wanted to make before as well, when the question of the Chair was directed at me as well. So currently, there are only a certain number of entities, based on the annual review that they make, that have to disclose their sort of modern slavery mitigation risk measures. And while federally at least they're considering to lowering that threshold, a lot of the entities that would have to provide transparency in the TCF industry would not make that threshold. And that would mean that we have a large blind spot effectively if we weren't to utilise this particular scheme. And that obviously also applies to the potential broadening of the scheme, which my colleague Chris referred to, and which Igor and Luigi also referred to. A lot of those entities, the smaller ones, would not be captured by the legislation. And I do think, again, coming back to, I suppose, the blind spots and the idea that obviously modern slavery oftentimes occurs in those places which are more opaque, where people are more likely to fall through the cracks. And those smaller entities would ultimately also be captured by these types of schemes and initiatives, which would shed light indeed on those sectors where people are most vulnerable.
Mr, Dr Kane?
I've got a follow-up question. Often when you talk about modern slavery in an Australian context, and even when we're talking about it here, and we're talking about pressures in supply chains and that kind of thing. But is, I mean, non-compliance with labour law though isn't the same as modern slavery, is it? What's the connection there?
Yeah, no, I'm happy you raised that. Modern slavery is a bit of an unfortunate term in many ways because it always conjures up connotations with what might be coined traditional slavery. And modern slavery, basically, one of the key differences is that traditional slavery was more about legal ownership or this is about illegal control. So as a result, modern slavery should be seen as occurring on a spectrum of exploitation where people, you know, might initially experience lesser forms of labour abuses or simple forms of labour standards, non-compliance, where that's not meeting their or not being given their legal entitlements. But people can move along that spectrum. So it's not a once and for all set of circumstances that you are exposed to. Indeed, times change, situations change, and people might move along that spectrum. And so we shouldn't see modern slavery and decent work as binary categories. There's a large area in between with large amounts of different types of non-compliance and exploitation that can occur. So I suppose, coming at it from a proactive enforcement perspective as well, so what this scheme does, obviously, it would potentially nip worse types of exploitation in the bud. So if you are able to make sure that people do meet their legal entitlements and/or get paid their legal entitlements, and Mr Nossa referred to this as well in terms of the, I suppose, putting a bottom in the market by having a scheme in place such as this, but also he referred to the cleaning accountability framework, which has effectively also put a bottom in the market. You level the playing field and you stop that, I suppose, race to the bottom where you have these unethical practices just because profit margins have become so thin that a lot of, I suppose, suppliers and businesses almost have no choice but to, I suppose, I suppose, look up the boundaries of what would be legally permissible and not. And therefore, you could potentially deal with these issues before they escalate into worse types of exploitation. So, yeah.
Okay, so if, looking at your submission, part of it was transparency. You spoke about transparency. So part of the benefit of something like this scheme is improving transparency as part of it. But the other part is hopefully not finding, not finding modern slavery-like characteristics because the scheme, if it's operationalised, actually prevents that, the worst effects.
Correct. That's great. Yes, that was, yes, what I was getting to.
Thank you. Associate Professor Wright, you mentioned that a code like this, and I know from your scholarship about supply chain regulation around the world, is best practice. I wonder if you could sort of contextualise that a bit? And is there anything else that we could look at for other thoughts or inspiration? Or is, you know, maybe expand a bit upon the best practice?
Yeah, sure. So that, I mean, there's been a lot of scholarship that's been done on this issue and those two principles around the accountability measures for lead firms and having empowered independent agents to monitor and enforce. Those are features that are not common to many of the forms of voluntary codes that you referenced in your questions to the previous witnesses. So, you know, we've seen in the past 10 years or so, including in this industry, major multinational retailers adopt voluntary codes of practice that are aimed at demonstrating that they're being proactive around ensuring that their supply chains don't, are free of modern slavery and practices and associated practices related to, you know, non-compliance with legal standards. So many of those measures, you know, don't provide firm accountability mechanisms for the lead firm, the retailer involved, because they're voluntary. There's no one really to hold them to account. That's where the state has a very important role, I think, in providing that accountability. And they often don't empower independent agents, like trade unions, for example, to be involved. There are other schemes in other parts of the world that do provide measures akin to this. So in the United Kingdom, there's an agreement called the National Agreement for the Engineering and Construction Industry. And this provides those two measures, lead firm accountability and empowering unions as independent agents to enforce the agreement. This is a scheme that is supported by unions and also employers because of the benefits that are produced by this arrangement in terms of supporting decent work, avoiding modern slavery-like practices, especially at the bottom of the contracting chain, and also productivity benefits, reduced industrial disputation, and greater certainty for businesses involved. So, yeah, there are significant benefits from these type of arrangements. They also help to reduce commercial risks as well for lead firms. So, you know, just to take one example from this industry, 11 years ago, there was a disastrous factory collapse in Bangladesh, the Rana Plaza factory collapse. Many of the retailers and clothing brands that were sourcing directly or independently, sorry, directly or indirectly from contractors in that building had no measure to provide oversight or to ensure that the health and safety practices that had contributed to that disaster were avoided. Consequently, many of those businesses were either under pressure from unions and community organisations or from governments or from investors, were compelled to up their game. Were a measure like this, had it extended beyond the jurisdictional boundaries of Australia, I know that it does beyond the boundaries of New South Wales within Australia, then that sort of, those sort of risks would have been minimised for the Australian businesses that were associated. So in terms of potentially extending the scheme, this sort of scheme, the measures involved, you know, could significantly help to reduce commercial risks for businesses within the supply chain.
That is really interesting. Thank you, and thank you for both of those examples. It does, I do want to ask a bit about this co-enforcement. Both the ethical clothing scheme and the schemes you spoke Both the ethical clothing scheme and the schemes you spoke about, and we heard evidence from Mr. Nossa, speak about the importance of having businesses involved. And I think there may be a danger, if people aren't aware of that kind of involvement, of reading the code and of thinking this is some kind of union scheme that sends a union in to do something, I don't know what, but to do something. But that's not really what it's about, is it? Could either of you explain a bit more about the importance of that multi-stakeholder approach, either using this or other examples?
I'm sure I can go first. I must say, just one point, and then pass to my colleague. So, I mean, what constitutes effective regulation of work? In Australia, we have a tradition of the state having a strong role, and that's been effective for the most part from my research. But one of the things that comes out of the international evidence about effective regulation is the importance of both worker representatives and business representatives being involved, because they are the most, the actors with the greatest stake in ensuring compliance and effective regulation. Effective regulation that balances the needs of workers for fairness and business for So a state-led model of regulation has benefits, but the most effective models of regulation supported by the state are those that proactively involve both business and workers and their representatives in this process. And I believe that this scheme does that through the measures that it contains regarding transparency and monitoring and accountability, and the roles that retailers and trade unions play in those processes.
Yeah, absolutely. I can second that. So what we've seen initially, when I spoke before about, I suppose, the more opaque parts of supply chains, and we've seen that both globally, as well as sort of within Australia's borders, is that you have so-called governance gaps, like little parts of supply chains that, I suppose, becomes so obscure that we're not really sure what's going on. And that has happened, like I said, both globally, as well as domestically. And the initial response to that was for companies to come up with their own codes, for business to, I suppose, regulate themselves to try and address that. And that has not been highly successful. And I suppose from the mid-2000s and later onwards, there has been more of a move towards multi-stakeholder initiatives and strategic co-regulation, where there was recognition that if you put all the stakeholders together to try and address the issue, then you get various, very valuable insights into what the problem is, and you can together put the finger on the sore spot. But also, in the context of, I suppose, contemporary labour standards enforcement, it's the idea that it's just the regulator that can do it all by itself, for example, is outdated. So you do need the union involved in that capacity, you do need the industry involved in that capacity, you do need big bodies, the companies themselves, and most importantly, the workers involved in those initiatives, to again, put the finger on the sore spot and to, I suppose, effectively come together and try and address this issue. And we've referred to the Cleaning Accountability Framework before, which is a prime example of an industry which has been plagued for many decades by labour standards non-compliance due to cutthroat competition. The union itself couldn't solve it, the Fair Work Ombudsman itself couldn't solve it due to various reasons, the industry itself surely couldn't solve it as well. And they have ultimately all come to realise that when they join efforts in order to address this problem, they have a much better chance of addressing this issue. So, yeah, sort of the multi-stakeholder route and bringing stakeholders together is definitely the way, for when I think the scheme offers avenues to do the same.
Of course, the point that was made by Mr. Nossa was the difference between the scheme and, for example, CAP, is that you do still have the involvement of the state, which is what you were talking about in terms of, so it still provides that greater impetus for non-ethical players to be involved. I wonder if I could just ask, both of you mentioned, you know, traditional labour law and that it no longer, because one question will be, well, traditional labour law has done this work in the past, you know, we've had it work. What is it about the characteristics of modern work that mean that the traditional kind of labour laws and arbitration systems and things that we've had in the past doesn't work?
I might have the first to go there. Well, I think because labour law, employment law, is built around the assumption of a direct employment relationship between employer and employee, and whereby the employer has effectively, is not only just managing that worker, but has control over that employee's conditions. The, this industry is characterised by other actors, third parties, effective business controllers like retailers, that, whose commercial activities invariably influence the employment relationship, or the work relationship between a contractor and a business who engages their services. So there's, I know there's been discussion, you know, in the previous session about, you know, whether changes to the law, state and federal, since the establishment of the code in 2005 render it redundant. And my answer to that would be no, absolutely not. That the code is a way of making awards, for example, as one measure of, one form of employment law, work more effectively. Because awards are a necessary, but not, but an insufficient measure of regulation, because all they do essentially is provide a minimum standard that the employer of the employee is obliged to uphold. But when the employer has limited capacity to uphold their responsibilities because of the commercial pressures they're facing through their commercial contract with the retailer or with the contractor who's engaging them, then that is, they have limited control. So having an additional measure in the form of a code that provides, that brings the lead firm, the retailer explicitly into the arrangement, provides accountability to them to monitor and enforce, and work with empowered independent agents to do that, that is necessary. So, look, in many ways, Australia's systems of employment law, state and federal, reflect that kind of, they're rather old-fashioned in that they are based around a relationship, the assumption of a relationship between an employer and employee without incorporating explicitly other third parties. We need measures like the code to ensure that labour law reflects the realities of work and business in 2024.
Okay, Dr. Wright, I'm just going to, yes, I'm going to now move to Ms. Leong.
Thank you, and thank you both for your responses so far and your submission. I wanted to just get to something, because I want to give you the chance to talk a little bit more about it, is the discussion of establishing a supply chain database. And I guess I just wonder, in the discussions that we've had so far, around the sort of lack of resourcing or engagement with this, at a departmental level, within the public service and within government, I wonder, how do you see that sort of working? Where would you see it being resourced, and who would ultimately be responsible for sort of maintaining it and that kind of thing? Because I appreciate the recommendation around it, but do you have thoughts, given the risks around the scheme itself and the code being sidelined, do you see a place of where that would sit such that it would actually be delivering what you're hoping it would?
Yeah, I think that would naturally sit with New South Wales Industrial Relations, to be frank. I think that one of their roles potentially could be to, I suppose, establish standard operating procedure around that. So from my experience with, again, coming back to Cleaning Accountability Framework, with my experience is that all the stakeholders that are meant to provide information, but also the stakeholders that are meant to digest that information, benefit greatly from really straightforward guidelines and streamlined procedures as to how to submit that type of interpretation. So if it's clear for retailers, for example, through the establishment of templates, through a simple online portal or a simple email address where you would send that to, it would make that information provision a lot easier. Also, the regulator as an objective body would be a natural place to submit that to, potentially also due to possibly commercially sensed information or other information. But also, I suppose, from an enforcement perspective, then very well placed to look at that data, look at those submissions, and, you know, through the existing data points, but potentially through extension of the scheme and the inclusion of additional data points, it would for them be easier to establish where there might be little red flags as to potential labour standards non-compliance with, for example, the submissions of information that submit profit margins that are so thin that potentially somewhere corners are being cut. And that could lead them to strategically direct their resources to follow up with an audit or an additional request for information, et cetera. So ultimately, New South Wales Industrial Relations would be a natural place for that to sit, in my opinion.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And I guess to a broader issue around, and the pointing to the Industrial Relations Department in relation to that, and recognising that currently the Anti-Slavery Commissioner and responsibility for the Modern Slavery Act actually sits with Department of Communities and Justice. Given the submissions we've received from a number of people to see the idea to use, Mr. Nossa's words, to resuscitate this scheme and the code, and given that you're aware that we're reviewing currently the Modern Slavery Act, I wondered, do you have thoughts about whether there is a potential to, in one hand, strengthen the enforceability and the direct compliance elements of the Modern Slavery Act by learning from this code, and potential for an integration between those elements? Not sort of just, because I think historically, we've seen that they're sitting very much in different departments, but we hear all of the evidence, and we all know that there is a direct link between dodgy labour practices and risks of modern slavery, and yet they're seen as such separate entities. I wonder if you have thoughts about the potential for the multi-stakeholder model being applied to the Modern Slavery Act, but also if there's an opportunity for us as a committee to look at the review of the Modern Slavery Act and a desire to strengthen it, with the potential sort of regulation model that involves other stakeholders?
Yeah, yeah. I can briefly start. Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think from what I've learned, Commissioner Cokane has been very busy meeting all different departments and other people that have been working in any area related to labour standards compliance and whatnot. So he obviously, his office has made a submission, a co-offer also by Ms. Justine Conybeer as well. I suppose articulating what a role is that his office could play in the enforcement here. And indeed, my colleague Chris and I, as part of the recommendation three, do think that there is scope to articulate that collaboration between those departments more succinctly. And obviously, the New South Wales Anti-Slavery Commissioner's Office has only fairly recently been established, so it's still, I suppose, in its early days and finding its feet and finding a form in which it best operates. But, yeah, articulating, I suppose, the role that they could play in finding effective ways of resource sharing, finding effective ways of, I suppose, working together to come to more, I suppose, effective enforcement would be very valuable. And indeed, the Commissioner has articulated in other areas, such as renewable energy, I suppose, particular guidelines and codes recently as well, which is obviously a very important area. But this seemingly could be an area, and I think there is a role potentially for a broader working group, which includes people from New South Wales Industrial Relations, but also from Commissioner Cokane's office, to come together and sit and see which elements from this particular scheme, the core elements can be taken and potentially transposed onto other high-risk industries. So I just definitely see fertile scope for collaboration there.
Great. Thank you. Did you want to come?
Yeah, thanks.
So I'm not sure if you've been delegated with your doctors to professors, but I'm, either way, Chris, please.
Thanks, Ms. Leong. Yeah, look, so I think that it is a model that the committee should consider for strengthening modern slavery regulations, both in terms of the accountability mechanisms and transparency mechanisms, but also in terms of the, regarding the threshold. You know, this is an industry where many of the businesses, as we say in our submission, are under the $150 million threshold. The code provides effective mechanisms to cover those businesses. And so there are, I think, those three elements of the scheme around accountability, transparency, and coverage that the committee should consider when reviewing the Modern Slavery Act.
Thank you so much for that.
Mr. Borzak?
I'm fine, thanks.
And Mrs. Ayad?
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Dr. Kane?
I think I'm okay.
Yeah, I just, if we've got time, then I will just ask one more. And that was your thoughts around, because obviously, there's the good sides of multi-stakeholder involvement, and the negative sides being that no one feels like they own it and have accountability and responsibility for ensuring that it happens. I know that there's also, there's mention within the Act, the idea of a council existing, which, as far as I can tell, doesn't exist.
It used to.
It used to exist, but doesn't anymore, and it's unclear who's responsible for ensuring that it does exist. I just wonder if you have thoughts about how we ensure that there is some ownership or accountability or responsibility at a ministerial level and a departmental level for ensuring that this scheme, as it sits, is actually adhered to and applied?
Yeah, that's a very good point. For all their, I suppose, benefits and the virtues that have been sung about multi-stakeholder initiatives, it is often, it is true that progress can be glacial, and some stakeholders might be dragging their feet. And oftentimes, just joining is seen as an act of, we're trying to do the good thing, but not really actually, you know, effectively and working towards solutions. So reiterating my previous point, I think a natural place where this scheme could sit would be, I think, New South Wales Industrial Relations. That would be, I suppose, a natural place where it could sit, and I think if they would be spearheading initiatives, that could be very helpful. But also from the idea of, okay, well, participation in this scheme is good, and, you know, potentially could lead to stopping worse types of abuses and labour standards non-compliance occurring. So I suppose for them, it is a bit of a carrot as well, like for retailers. You can join and be proactive and try and sort this out, rather than later on being confronted with a particular abuse and the potentially, New South Wales Industrial Relations, you know, striking a different tone and using more of a stick than the initial carrot.
Sorry, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I have just some additional thoughts.
Yeah, please, please.
Sorry, if that's okay. Yeah, so look, I think that a council model is a very good one, and it works in some of the examples I've mentioned, such as the National Engineering, National Agreement for the Engineering and Construction Industry in the United Kingdom. They have a national joint council for the engineering and construction industry, which, without which that agreement would not have achieved the success that it has throughout its 43-year existence. The council consists of equal representatives from employees, employee representatives, the unions and the employer associations, and an independent chair that is jointly agreed by both parties. That, so, and it's a model that's worked previously well in Australia. Another ingredient is ensuring that workers and indeed businesses are represented effectively through that structure. So I know there have been recent changes to Commonwealth law around trade union access to workplaces. We get to see what the impacts of those are. But having a well-represented workforce and business community is widely identified as effective, as necessary for effective joint regulation to occur. That's what we see in the Nordic countries, in Germany, in other parts of the world. And so ensuring that those measures are in place in this industry and in other industries where this sort of model might be expanded to, I think is absolutely essential for its future success.
But it's fair to say, I think, picking up the point from Ms. Leong, that having a code that's notionally meant to have a base and a regulatory force based on the state, if it's not housed somewhere within state apparatus, or if it's not auspiced or driven, then it's going to be difficult for that to have, beyond what ECA and the union have been trying to do, it's not particularly useful, is it?
No, yeah. I think state involvement, or state support is absolutely vital.
Yeah, and it seems unclear, it seems, I mean, it seems a bizarre situation that we have a requirement for a council, no one's removed that requirement, but it seems there's no details as to who's responsible for that council.
We might, I had, can I just, I had, I did have a discussion with Mr. Nossa prior to the hearing and reflected on the fate of the council. And I think it actually may have had a specific timeframe. So I think it may be worth our going back and finding out precisely what happened to that and why that was the situation.
It established the homeworkers' code. It established the Home Workers' Code of Conduct, which then became ECA.
Yeah, yeah.
And, yes, but, yes, so I think it's worth us perhaps seeking some further information to clarify what happened in that instance. But clearly, you've reiterated, Dr Wright, the value of having that council and that structure in place.
And it doesn't mean, it's not, it doesn't take away from what we're saying about regardless of the council, if there's a code and it's state-endorsed or state-derived, then it needs to have a home.
Yes.
Yeah, totally, which I think is the bigger question here, right? Who's responsible for being resuscitated?
I would agree with those comments.
Great, thank you. So can I just thank you for your evidence? Will the secretariat contact you if we have any in-race to questions on ours and if we have any further informational requests? Thank you very much. At this point, I might ask you to withdraw and we'll take a short break. We'll take a short break in the hearing and reconvene at 11:15.
Thank you, thanks very much.
If we start.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, right. Welcome to everyone as we resume the hearing today and I'd like to welcome Ms Rachel Riley. As we recommence the hearing after the break. Ms Riley, I wonder if you could please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
Sure, is that going on?
Yep.
Rachel Riley, I'm the National Manager of Ethical Clothing Australia. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Would you like to commence by making a short statement?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge that I am on the lands of the Gadigal people of the Ouran- of your nation. And also just to acknowledge that my homeland is the Wurundjeri in Nam in Melbourne. Thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before the Modern Slavery Committee this morning. Having read through the submissions and also having heard the two previous witness panels. I do want to just point out that there's significant subject matter expertise around the IR laws, which I don't have. So to that end, I'd just like to note the following opening comments. I've worked directly with victims and survivors of human trafficking in Australia in another industry for more than five and a half years. Which has provided me with really critical insight into the conditions which enable modern slavery to occur within Australian workforces. With the structure of the TCF industry and the existence of outworkers within the business model. Who are extremely hidden and invisible within supply chains. There is no doubt in my mind that the full continuum of exploitative labour practices exists. Which would include what would constitute modern slavery in the local industry. If we work on the assumption that modern slavery results from the failure of our systems to identify vulnerability. And to prevent and remedy exploitation. Then I do firmly believe that the existence of the Ethical Clothing Australia Accreditation Programme. Was born out of recognizing these vulnerabilities and creating a framework for remedy to occur. The programme is both a protective and preventative factor of the more extreme forms of exploitative labour practices from occurring. Including forced labour. Due to the business model itself being a risk factor, there should be sustained efforts. To ensure that protective frameworks not only remain in place. But are enhanced and this includes initiatives to increase New South Wales TCF businesses. To participate in Ethical Clothing Australia Accreditation Programme. And also retaining and operationalising the Ethical Clothing Extended Responsibility Scheme. Ethical Clothing Australia is a multi-stakeholder initiative spanning industry, business and union. And the programme truly centres workers' voices. Provides remedy and restitution for rights violations. While also creating a pathway for workers to access their human rights. Which empowers them as rights and duty bearers rather than from a position of benevolence. To this end, the Ethical Clothing Australia Accreditation Programme supports the state's international human rights obligations. And is also a programme to support the private sector to carry out their obligations under standards such as the UN Guiding Principles on Business and Human Rights. Other international standards and also the proposed Future Treaty on Business and Human Rights. And lastly, just sort of akin to what I've said. In New South Wales being the leading state really in addressing modern slavery. We do firmly encourage the New South Wales Government. To recognise that both the global and the local industry as a high-risk industry. And further noting what I've said, recognise that Ethical Clothing Australia. Is offering a proven solution for risk mitigation and remediation of rights violations and subsequently. We do encourage the New South Wales Government to adopt a procurement policy which preferences. Ethical Clothing Australia Accreditation for all publicly procured textile clothing and footwear items such as uniforms and PPE. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms Riley. I might start the questioning if. Ms Riley, I wonder if you could just, for me, outline how the accreditation scheme currently operates. And what resources you have and how that's funded. And then second part is what is preventing its expansion? You know, what are the barriers to, you know, more firms taking up or the scheme expanding? So just describe it, how it's funded, how it operates, the resources you have and then barriers to.
Yeah, great. So the scheme itself, so as I noted in my opening remarks, it's a joint industry, union and business initiative. And to that end, it's a voluntary code of practice or voluntary accreditation programme. That businesses sign up to. And the code of practice is based on the existing workplace laws. Primarily the textile clothing footwear and associated industries award and other relevant workplace laws. So the businesses which are voluntarily signing up are not being asked to do anything beyond complying. With the existing workplace laws, with the exception of one instance, which is where there has been a violation. Where an outworker has, in the supply chain, has not received their legal entitlements. The principal business is responsible for remediating that violation, which is an extension of current laws. So businesses sign up, they sign up to the code of practice. Which then requires them to go through a yearly annual audit. It must be repeated each year because we know. That if it's not repeated each year, there's the likelihood of the compliance within the organisation or the business slipping. So we maintain that yearly audit where their complete supply chain, so all in-house operations. And all suppliers that they've contracted, including down to the outworkers, are audited. And that includes looking at ensuring they're being paid appropriately against the award. Receiving all their correct entitlements, legal entitlements, as well as superannuation. And working in safe and healthy conditions. So once they have, I guess to point out as well during the course of the audit. Because it is a joint union industry initiative and it's supposed to be a collaborative approach. Which works with businesses who have breaches in their supply chain or within their in-house operations. The audit works with the business, the compliance team works with the business until breaches are remediated. So by the end of the audit cycle, they are compliant with all Australian workplace, relevant workplace laws. And I think that's where the real power in the programme lies in that it is. It's not a, it's only in an instance where a business refuses to remediate breaches that they will be cut off. So it works until resolved unless there's a barrier to prevent that and that barrier is that the. The principal business or a supplier in the principal business's supply chain is opting not to be legally compliant. So I think there's a real power in that joint, that the collaborative approach. And I think to note on that, that we know that some businesses opt to be non-compliant. But often it is because they don't quite necessarily understand their own obligations. And so again, the power in being able to work with them to understand their obligations so that. They build that into their business practices. So the Ethical Clothing Australia is the sort of administrative side of the programme. And we have, and as Mr Nossa outlined, we have a service level agreement with the relevant union. To execute the compliance audits. They have existing powers under the Fair Work Act to be able to enter and request documentation, which, documentation. Which is again where it is considered probably one of the more rigorous audits globally. Because it's drawing on those existing powers. And so the union executes the audit component of the programme. In terms of resourcing, up until recently, we have been funded by the Victorian Government. For, I think, the last six years. Prior to that, it had been the federal government. More recently, in April of, can't remember what year we're in, I think it was April of twenty-three. We received funding from the federal government. So currently we're resourced by both the federal and the Victorian state government. And in terms of what is preventing, I think that's a good question. It's voluntary. So it's predicated on the fact that most businesses want to be doing good. But we're existing in an environment, obviously, that's incredibly strained at the moment economically. So some businesses opting to opt out of the programme or to. To not join in the first instance. I think another barrier is that, coming back to where we've been resourced, we have been heavily focused in Victoria. That's where our head office is and that's where our operations have lied up until recently. We have been working on expanding and have staff in both Queensland and one staff member in New South Wales now. We don't have the, I guess, the brand awareness of who we are in the other states and territories. So there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be done to build that awareness, to get eligible businesses on board. And I guess as well, the Victorian Government has sort of provided, incentivised businesses to join up with the programme. Through schemes such as the Ethical Supplier Register and the Guidance on Procuring Uniforms and PPE. And that has seen a growth in Victoria of businesses joining. And I think coming back to what Mr Nossa said, the Extended Clothing Responsibility Scheme was. Part, in part, supposed to drive businesses to become accredited under the voluntary code. And with that, that being operationalised, there's less incentivisation in other states and territories to join up to the scheme.
Just to have a couple of follow-up.
Yep.
Do organisations pay any fees to join?
Yes, they do. Yep. So the fees are based on their operations, so how much, how many staff are covered in-house. And how many, how much they are outsourcing in terms of revenue. As an, it is an incredibly cheap audit compared to what you would get internationally through third parties. And I have got an example here for you. We've got a business that employs more than seventy people and we don't know how many, our cap. Our fee structure cuts out at seventy plus. So they employ more than seventy people. They outsource more than ten million dollars worth of services. They have twenty-two businesses in their supply chain. And in that twenty-two businesses, there's more than four hundred and five additional workers that the audit's covering. And they pay less than ten thousand dollars, which is the equivalent of about twenty dollars per worker that's being audited to ensure that. All their rights are being upheld and protected. So an incredibly affordable cost to the businesses.
And the auditing is done by union members, delegates, representatives?
Yep.
And from what you said, they visit each site yearly?
Yep.
Would that include each, for example, that each of the twenty-two businesses in that company, in that example you just referred to?
Yep, correct. Yep. And I think that, again, that's the power of the order. It is, they're on the ground, doing the work. Meeting the workers, understanding the working environments in which they're working in. Talking to the workers, really centring those worker voices in the audit.
And just finally, do you fund those union representatives or are they funded from the union?
Yeah, so again, under the service level agreement, so in part the funding which we receive from the Victorian and the federal governments. We then provide funding to the union to execute that aspect of the programme.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm gonna go to Dr Kane next.
Thank you very much, Ms Riley, for your submission and your evidence today. Just talking again about that service level agreement. Obviously, this is a modern slavery committee and you mentioned in your, in your submission that there's nothing in particular in your service level agreement that talks about. Identifying modern slavery. But I guess, given the evidence we've heard, given the industry, there's an overlap, isn't there? There's an important oversight function that's still being performed by the code, your code.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, you know, my opening comments have sort of spoken to the fact that it's both a protective and a preventative. Framework for modern slavery and, you know, genuinely having worked in an industry that doesn't have these sorts of frameworks in place. I genuinely believe that and I come back to what Dr Professor Marta Ambrosima said. As well that, you know, that there's the full continuum of exploitative labour practices that exist in the industry. And the fact that this yearly audit is undertaken, sort of ensures that. The standards within the business themselves and their supply chains doesn't slip over time. Should that not be in place? And we do have case examples of that where a business has opted out of the accreditation programme. And within a year, two years, they had significant amounts of wages or superannuation that was owing. Because there was nobody there checking and inspecting and making sure that they were maintaining and upkeeping their obligations. So I do firmly believe that the existence of the programme itself is the protective and preventative factor. Within the industry and that. That potentially as well, based on my experience, you know, the understanding and. Understanding and recognising what constitutes modern slavery in workplaces is probably still something that. A lot of people need to fully understand. And most certainly in some of the case examples that I've heard, I would say that, that those situations constituted modern slavery.
Okay. And I get a related question to do again with this service level agreement. And I'm trying to remember whether it was your submission or the union's submission, talking about. Trust issues in terms of getting workers to sort of reveal the actual conditions. But also the types of people even that you want to go and conduct audits or engage. And with your, what I'm understanding is your previous experience, have you got some comments to make about why the people that you get? You know, yes, the union has industrial powers that other organisations might not have, but there are other reasons, aren't there, to get perhaps the union?
Yeah, a hundred percent. And, you know, it, it's, you know, I think today we've spoken a lot about the laws around it. But at the end of the day, we're trying to protect people and, you know, often people don't understand their rights. They might not understand that they're being exploited. They don't, they have, you know, fear, distrust, a whole range of things. And I think in these sorts of working environments, the importance of employing people with lived or living experience of the. Industry and the exploitation, having potentially experienced the exploitation themselves is a powerful. Tool in being able to adequately build that rapport, to enable people to be able to speak out or to feel confident. And comfortable to bring an issue to the fore. And most certainly the compliance team at, that we contract to at the union. And also to note, we have, as part of the SLA agreement, they have an outworker outreach team as well. Who are made up of people who have experience of the textile clothing and footwear industry. And who are multi and bilingual so that they do understand how to engage and approach. The different demographic profiles that exist within the industry. So it is incredibly important from my perspective of both being at Ethical Clothing Australia and my previous role. To be engaging people who have the understanding of the work at hand and the lived experience to be able to engage. Vulnerable workers.
Could you, that was one of the questions that I had. So you've got the accreditation programme and then you've got the outreach. Could you talk a little bit more about the outworker outreach programme?
Yeah, sure. So an incredibly difficult cohort of workers to be able to access. And I think all submissions struggle to be able to define how many there are. And one submission indicated that, you know, the situation's been fixed because everything went offshore. And I actually think that that's not, not the case at all. I think it's probably beyond this committee to be addressing gender equality. But, you know, we know that this type of work really works for women who have unpaid labour, caring duties. They need to be working from home. They have other barriers to be able to access more formal forms of employment. So they're incredibly hidden, incredibly, you know, under the radar. And the outworker outreach team, again, you know, with bilingual, multilingual workers, workers with experience of the industry. It's not as simple as going and knocking on an outworker's door and saying hello. It is actually about going to community centres, to, you know, Lunar New Year festivities. To, to places where outworkers are likely to be and to build awareness of, of. What the programme is, but more importantly, what their rights are under Australian workplace laws. And so then through building that rapport, built the trust, both in the individuals but also within the programme. For outworkers to disclose their situation. And I draw your attention, I think, to the case study that I put in my submission, which was, you know, an outworker who. Came across one of the union outworker outreach workers years after she'd quit being an outworker. And how thankful and relieved that she was, that she was able to share her experience of exploitation. Because she'd carried that with her for years and had no one to tell, because no one either cared or listened to what she had to say. So that real ground, on-the-ground, bottom-up work has to be done with this particular cohort of workers.
I just wanted to ask a question about the multi-stakeholder nature that you did mention again in your introduction. But can you maybe give us a bit of a sense of the governance and, you know, how the different stakeholders interact?
Yeah, sure. So it is, again, joint union industry business initiative. So we're governed, we have the Homeworker Code Committee, which is equal representatives of either business or industry. And union members. So at the moment, we have two accredited businesses and industry. So the New South Wales, New South Wales Business also sits on the committee. Sorry, three accredited businesses and New South Wales Business and then four union representatives. It is a governance model by consensus. So to that end, it's not preferencing one area over the other. The consensus must be achieved. Or, or, there is, there is a provision for, you know, when consensus can't be achieved. But the stakeholders that have come together to be on the committee are genuinely there to foster that collaborative approach. I must say, having been involved in other governance structures, sometimes it's tense. You know, someone said to me, in the real world, that that sort of collaboration is probably quite challenging. But I think that's a testament to the fact that this is a programme that people genuinely want to maintain, to be collaboration. And to also be effective. And it's been going for twenty-three years, which I think is a testament to that. But yeah, so it's governed by sort of both spaces there.
And just, maybe despite, it's not the right word, but most of your accredited organisations are Victorian-based. That's where your base has been, but you still have New South Wales Business as part of your governing board.
Yeah, and that sort of comes, the origins of the code of practice being developed. Yep.
But you still have that connection.
Still have that connection. Yep. So they're a founding member, so they continue to be included on the committee.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms Leon?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms Riley. I really appreciate that. And I should just say that for many, many years I've been using your website. I had no idea of all of the machinations for how this works. So it's wonderful to be part of this committee and process.
Oh, great.
The thing that I, I guess, wanted to go to first was the discussion around funding and resourcing. And recognising the Victorian government funding and then the focus in Victoria. What do you see as the potential sort of gap or the extent to your coverage in New South Wales versus the potential to expand that? If you were to be able to have that sort of New South Wales focus? What, how does it compare in terms of the level of coverage you have in Victoria versus New South Wales? And I guess, what percentage do you see of New South Wales that might currently be covered by Ethical Clothing Australia and the potential for growth?
Yeah, sure. Yep, thank you. So if I just give the most up-to-date. Yeah, sure. Yep, thank you. So if I just give the most up-to-date numbers of accredited businesses, we have 113, and 17 of those sit in New South Wales. So it isn't, there is the opportunity for significant growth. I don't have the numbers at hand, but I know that in other submissions, they actually drew on the ABS data to outline how many businesses actually would be considered TCF businesses operating in Victoria. So as long as they have a local operations, sorry, local manufacturing and local supply chains, then they are eligible to apply and join the programme. So I think that there is a significant opportunity for growth in New South Wales with the right, I guess, levers that are sitting behind them.
Yeah, great. And can I ask you, in relation to that, and I'm happy for you to take it on notice, are you able to provide a bit more detail around your funding breakdown and how that works in terms of Victorian government funding and federal funding, such that we would have some idea? I appreciate you recommending that the New South Wales government provide funding. It'd be great to have a sense of what we're talking in terms of the scope of how that, your funding comes from different sources and what's possible.
Yeah, I can do that now. So historically, we received $1 million from the Victorian government. More recently, we've received an additional $1 million from the Victorian government for two years, so it's $2 million. The additional funding has been for other additional sorts of programmes. So we received, I guess, $1 million to deliver the programme that we're talking about at the moment. And we received $2 million per year for a period of three years from the federal government, that is to grow the programme in states and territories beyond Victoria. But there was also a large component of that funding that supported us to do sort of internal, I guess, upgrades, I guess, to the organisation in itself. And those operational processes, I think, will enable us to have sort of a stronger output later on.
Great. Thank you so much for that. I also wanted to talk, I guess, about, you mentioned the sort of, the collaborative way where audits are undertaken and then a willingness for those, any issues that have been found to be rectified, and then people can maintain their accreditation. I wonder, in cases where, in instances where there's a decision to not rectify those situations and people no longer maintain their accreditation, what is the current sort of recourse or penalties or structures in place to sort of report on that or otherwise? And I guess, going to the focus of this committee on modern slavery, do you see that there's potential to weave in the responsibilities of the Anti-Slavery Commissioner in relation to being aware or coming aware of certain risks that might occur that goes beyond the accreditation element but may move into the area of modern slavery?
Yeah. So first of all, as a, the de-accreditation as such is an absolute last resort. It's where there is, you know, completely broken down and unable to remedy the issue. And I'm sure Vivian Wiles will potentially speak to this a little bit more. But there is, there is then the ability for the union to prosecute.
Yes.
So there is still a recourse of action if the business, because again, where this is Australian workplace laws, it's, you know, they need to be compliant. It's not anything above and beyond that. So where they can't fix the issue, and I've been through this process with, you know, the compliance officer, it's absolutely when it's a last resort, the union does have the ability to prosecute there.
Can I just jump in and say that's another benefit of the union being directly involved, right?
Correct.
Because then they can engage in their own process, is that?
That's absolutely correct.
Yeah. So that moves back from your shared collaborative approach to the union's core business, if you like.
That's correct. And I think that's, it's really important to have that distinction because we want to maintain that collaboration.
Yeah.
So yeah, sort of, it comes out of the programme into a completely different space itself. But, you know, I do note that the New South Wales Anti-Slavery Commission submission did say that there was limited accountability mechanisms. But I do sort of think that there's, you know, the involvement of the union in the audits themselves then creates this different wraparound support to make sure that there is the accountability mechanisms in place. To weave in the Anti-Slavery Commissioner, I, I mean, I think there's merit to ensuring that things aren't siloed and that, you know, it's linked up, you know, in the different spaces. I disagree with his recommendation that he would be the person to go out and speak to outworkers. And just drawing you back to what I said about the nature of outworkers and the need for sort of that bottom-up approach to be able to safely and culturally speak to people, predominantly women, about their situations of exploitation. But I do come back to the point that potentially the lack of awareness of what constitutes modern slavery within Australian workplaces, there is a real need to increase awareness of what constitutes modern slavery. And to that end, then potentially, there is something that needs to be done around appropriate referral mechanisms if that is, a situation of modern slavery is to be found. That is complicated though, because, again, we're trying to work with businesses to enhance their operations. And if you're sort of outing a worker, then you're outing the business. So there's, yeah, there's some complexities around that. But there is an opportunity for a bit more of a joined-up approach, yes.
Thank you. And then a final question, if I may, just in relation to, given your experience in other industries prior and the other evidence and submissions we've received about the potential for expanding this approach into other at-risk industries and to protect at-risk workers. How do you see the model of Ethical Clothing Australia fitting into that? Would you see that we would need a similar body for other areas? Ethical delivering, driving Australia, or ethical whatever it is? Or do you, or do you see that there's the potential, because of the overlap of the risks, to actually expand out how that structure would work to different areas? Like, how specific do you think it would need to be as we're expanding that out? Or are there kinds of things we're looking at very similar at that top level of multi-stakeholder integration and actually more specific as to the specific kind of audit process and who are the people going in to do the audits?
Yeah. Very good question.
I'm also happy for you to take it on notice.
Yeah, no, no. I think it's an excellent question. I think it comes back to my point about the power in the programme, or particularly with the audits, is through the compliance, union compliance officers have, having knowledge, having come up, worked through those industries, having the knowledge of the nuances of how the industry operates and, you know, being able to quickly recognise where something isn't quite right, or where, you know, it's impossible for a garment to be made for that particular price, or, you know, seeing bag clothes on the shelves, but then the supplier hasn't disclosed outworkers, or, you know, whatever it is. Like, I think there's a real power in ensuring that, that, you know, it's industry-specific. And if we sort of come back to, you know, powers for other regulatory bodies to go in, they don't necessarily have the nuance of the industry to be able to adequately check. They don't know what the risks are that they're looking for. So I think that it is, I see what you're saying, though, they essentially have like hundreds of different committees. But I do think that that's probably where the power lies. And to have an overarching committee that's sort of there to address the exploitative labour practices across industries, I think you would then weaken what the programme is in itself. And 100%, you know, previous experience, the lack of any of this type of programme existing and the laws being very loosely applied in the industry, I think it would be problematic to sort of bring in just a generalised programme to try and protect the workers in that space. So I guess, coming to a long-winded way of saying, I think it does need to be industry, potentially over, you know, the course of 10, 15, 20, 30, 40 years, as we, you know, really operate and work to address how we've created structures that enable and allow exploitative labour practice to exist, potentially over time as we siphon through that and we get...
Yeah. If we abolish capitalism, we don't need to. You know, I don't imagine anyone's giving evidence at this committee about that. Can I just say, the reason I, the reason I ask is because I think we have received quite different submissions from, I think we have received quite different submissions in terms of where the Anti-Slavery Commissioner is coming from and his perspective versus the really sort of industry-specific perspective. And I guess I wanted to draw out what you saw as the benefits of the industry-specific element, recognising that we can identify that there are particular areas where workers are more at risk and that those industries over time may shift and change. So you wouldn't necessarily need the equivalent of Ethical Clothing Australia for every industry, but those that are identified as larger risks. And I guess, and I'll make this comment and ask for your thoughts on it, I guess, to me, one point of integration that I'm potentially thinking is the idea that the modern slavery, the Anti-Slavery Commissioner has the power to be able to identify certain at-risk industries that then would trigger some kind of establishment of a stronger mechanism along the lines of what we're seeing in the ethical clothing space, rather than necessarily saying the Anti-Slavery Commissioner would have full oversight of everything, which as you've identified, it needs to be industry-specific. So I don't know if you have thoughts about how we go about identifying those industries? Or I guess that whether or not you think the model for how it's set up would work for other industries, it's just it needs the right people around the table?
Yeah, I believe the latter, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to check, Mrs Ayed, do you have any questions?
Excuse me, sorry.
It's all right, Mr Borzac.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Dr Kane, I've got a question I want to ask as well, but you go first.
It just directly follows on from this.
Yes, go ahead.
So, following on from the questions from Mrs Leon about applicability to other industries, part of the submissions that we've had, it was about the specificities of understanding what constitutes exploitation in terms of output. So in TCF, it's about value and volume and how you decide what's an appropriate productivity rate. So what I'm hearing is that for other industries, there would need to be comparable consideration of what is an appropriate level of productivity to expect in agriculture or in cleaning, how many, you know, offices are you meant to clean? So that there would have to be that kind of nuanced information. And the other, so I just wanted to confirm that that is the essence of what you're...
Yes, agreed, yes, yeah.
And so getting to that, and also, I guess, jumping off from the, from the evidence we've had about multi-stakeholder schemes, that also you would want to have sort of business and employer input into that side of things as well. So it's not just, it wouldn't just be a regulator or, you know, and the workers, you'd also want to have, I guess, the business side of things contributing.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think it's hard work, but I think it is an exceptional model, yes. I think it needs to be a multi-stakeholder approach, not one particular player approach. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Look, I just, I'm going to ask a sort of a clarification question, and forgive my ignorance on this. So you've been operation 23 years?
Yes.
Ethical Clothing Australia, and it's a joint union business arrangement around accreditation. So in New South Wales, we've got the Ethical Clothing Responsibility Scheme with a mandatory code, which, as we've heard from other evidence, one of the main effects of the mandatory code is that it sort of incentivises people to adopt a voluntary accreditation system. So I'm just trying to understand how Ethical Clothing Australia interacted with the New South Wales system over these years. Were you, how did it actually work with respect to the Homeworkers Code of Practice, which has now been renamed, and I think we have an Ethical Clothing Council? So what was your involvement with that scheme? And I'll ask the union representative to also explain it to me. But could you just try and take me through that and assume that I don't understand?
I'm going to have to take that one on notice because I don't know the, how back in 2005, that particularly worked. Vivian might be able to speak to that a little bit more. But I can absolutely take that on notice, yes.
Could I have a follow-up with that?
Yes.
Yes. I guess a bit of a follow-up, and we were speaking about this, again, Mrs Leon asked some questions, as I did. Would it be fair to say that because, for whatever reasons, the code perhaps wasn't, the New South Wales code as opposed to your own code, wasn't perhaps followed up or enforced in New South Wales, that meant that perhaps it didn't work in the way that it was intended to, to create ethical clothing as a voluntary alternative? And because there wasn't any regulatory, real regulatory oversight, despite it existing on the books, that it wasn't having the effect that it was meant to of providing that alternative with ECA?
The only comment I can really take without, make without, a little bit of further research and conversations with people that are involved in the organisation is to Mr Nos' point that even though it wasn't fully operationalised, whatever, when they were talking to businesses, they, you know, they opted into the Ethical Clothing Australia Code of Practice because it was easier to do than the code at hand. So I'm drawing on what I've heard earlier today to be able to answer your question, but I can most certainly do a bit of a deeper dive. Thank you.
Yes, I just need to clarify what was happening in New South Wales then, and I guess now, actually. You say you've got 17 New South Wales businesses and you've got business in New South Wales on your oversight governance committee. I'm not sure what other voluntary system is operating in New South Wales at the moment. And, and also what was happening before. I don't think it was going entirely through your organisation, there must have been some other means of accreditation instead of the code. So I'll need to clarify that. I've just got one last question. You just mentioned earlier that people opt out and perhaps, and resourcing is an issue for that. I just want to clarify, it doesn't sound as though it's, I think you referred to the fact, sorry, that the economic environment's tough and pressures are tough, and therefore people don't want to afford the expense of accreditation. That's, is that related to the fee cost? Or is it actually related to the fact that they actually want to change their model of business?
Yeah, good question. So I've done a little bit of, I guess, reviewing of businesses that have opted out over the last few years, just to sort of see what's been happening. There is a large portion, I'm not necessarily sure that it is the fee cost, you know, it's something of sole trader, it's, you know, $300, $400 to be accredited. I think that the external economic environment is creating pressures that is leading to businesses potentially not having what they see as the fee to make the payment, they're closing down, a lot of manufacturers, smaller manufacturers have been closing down, some manufacture, some have been moving offshore as well, because there's been, you know, challenges within the local industry. But yes, I imagine that in my review, there are also businesses that have opted out that haven't provided a solid reason that, you know, sits around the struggles or the pressures that they're taking, which may lead, you might be able to assume that it is because that there's cost savings to be made in their practices that might not be uncovered if they're not part of the accreditation programme.
And that might also play to businesses that go overseas as well. So I wonder if you could take this on notice and just, if we could have some information on the numbers of businesses that have opted out, whether there's been a change recently in relation to that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely, I've got that.
Thank you. Okay, I think we might bring that to a close now. Thank you very much, Ms Riley.
Thank you.
We'll, we might, we've indicated some questions that you've taken on notice, we'll follow up if we have any further questions, and we might ask you to withdraw. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome our next witness. Good afternoon, Ms Wiles, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you.
Um, welcome. Thank you for making time to give evidence today. I wonder if you might uh either swear an oath or make the affirmation before we, state your name and position, sorry, and then swear the oath or make an affirmation, please.
Uh, my name is Vivian Wiles. I'm a Senior National Industrial Officer for the CFMEU Manufacturing Division. Um, and I'll take the affirmation. Um, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Would you like to start by making a short statement?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, well, good, good afternoon to the members of the committee and thank you for the opportunity um, for me to address you in person today. Um, as I indicated, I am appearing today on behalf of the Manufacturing Division of the CFMEU, but by way of background, um, the, I used to work for the Textile Clothing and Footwear Union of Australia prior to its amalgamation with the CFMEU in twenty eighteen and I'd, I'd worked for the TCFUWAS since two thousand. Um, so I have had extensive experience um representing and advocating for workers in the textile clothing and footwear industry, including outworkers. I was also involved in the union campaign um for TCF awards, specific reforms to the Fair Work Act in, in twenty twelve. Um, and also the review of the modern award. So I've, you know, have a reasonable um breadth of experience around the industry and understanding of the industry. Um, for transparency, I should also say that I am currently the Secretary of the Home Workers Code Committee and a member of that committee. Um, as Ms Riley indicated, it's a joint-union voluntary um committee and um uh, the, the union has representatives as does business on that committee. Um, I think we all probably understand, you know, the, the problem, all the problems in the TCF industry in terms of its structure and its history, um, and that it has been an industry unfortunately characterised by widespread non-compliance with minimum wages and conditions, um, and with poor health and safety over time. Um, you know, and partially that, and, and, and it, that was driven um by the reduction in tariffs over thirty-five to forty years. And what that meant is that the traditional structure of the TCF industry um essentially fragmented um into very long and complex supply chains. And the use of outworkers did increase as a result of that process. Um, the industry now, it, it is kind of a complex um combination of, you know, what would be considered to be traditional factories, um, long supply chains, um. We know that there is a, a group of outworkers, usually at the end of those supply chains. There's also a sort of phenomena of sweatshops which unfortunately still persist, um. And I think as we indicated in our submission, um, it's not uncommon for outworkers to move between outwork and sweatshops and back again, following the work that's available to them. So this context of the nature and characteristics of the TCF industry is important to understand because it explains why the attempts at regulation of the industry have been so difficult over such a long time, um. And why some of those attempts have been successful and, and why some of them have failed, um. And obviously the union over many decades has been involved in that process. Um, we need to acknowledge that it is a difficult industry and, and despite its association with fashion, the reality of much TCF production in Australia um is unglamorous. Um, the need to consistently look behind the label is both a practical and moral necessity if workers' rights are to be effectively protected. And so the need for strong, comprehensive and effective regulation of the TCF industry remains. I wasn't present earlier, unfortunately, in Mr Nos' presentation, but um, as I understand it, he set out the sort of origins of the New South Wales Clothing, Ethical Clothing Responsibility Scheme. And that was very much driven by the union at that time, um, in it. It was a very much an innovative attempt to ensure transparency within TCF supply chains, um, within, uh, or uh, in New South Wales. Importantly, the New South Wales scheme placed significant obligations on retailers in the TCF industry. And this really did reflect the real power exerted by them in the setting of the price for the production of TCF, TCF goods for sale in New South Wales. This intervention directly acknowledged that retailers in the TCF industry do not sit at arm's length from production in the industry, but instead exert real economic power at the top of multiple supply chains. And in this sense, the, the New South Wales scheme was novel because it ca, it, because it captured all retailers, including those who did not directly manufacture TCF goods and did not otherwise consider themselves bound by standard employment and TCF industry regulation. And this critical element was something which wasn't found in any other form of TCF um, award or legislative regulation, either at the state or the federal level at the time. The New South Wales scheme was, in the union's view, correctly structured as a mandatory scheme. Um, and as we've heard, it did however contain a mechanism whereby if a business was accredited to the Home Workers Code of Practice, either as a retailer or a manufacturer, it was exempt um from the New South Wales scheme. And clearly, clearly that intention um was to incentivise, not, not only on an individual level, but also on an industry level, to take responsibility for um ensuring that ethical production occurred in the TCF industry. And I mean, one of the things to, to remember too is the whole origins of the code, uh, so the Home Workers Code, um, was that parts of the industry who were ethical and were doing the right thing actually came to the union and said, you know, this race to the bottom based on price is killing us and we can't compete essentially with those rats and mice over there who are profiting um on the basis of exploitation of workers. Um, so that, that's how the discussion started. It was a recommendation, I think, from a nineteen ninety-six Senate Committee, Commonwealth Senate Committee. But in practice, that's how it came into being. Um, so it, it's origins were obvious. There was an obvious need um to capture retailers as well because of their economic power. So in our written submission, we, we do acknowledge there has been a range of um developments since um the scheme um was legislated and those developments are significant, we acknowledge that. Um, that includes the passage of the Fair Work Act, um, the creation of the modern award for the TCF industry and the transfer of industrial action powers from the New South Wales Government um, to the Commonwealth in twenty ten. There was also some major reforms to the Fair Work, Fair Work Act in twenty twelve, um, which expressly dealt with um, the position of TCF outwork. And the aim, the aim of those reforms importantly was to to create a set of nationally consistent rights which dealt with outwork um across Australia. Um, and that was partially successful, but there was one aspect that wasn't successful. And, and that was that um, as part of those reforms, the Commonwealth Government um now had the capacity to, to issue or to legislate a national code of practice relating to TCF outwork. But that never actually eventuated. So the capacity still exists in the legislation, um, but it was never enacted. So what we say is that there's still a gap um in regulation whereby if there was a national code, for example, maybe the New South Wales scheme wouldn't be needed, but, but there isn't. And why that national code was important is because of, of the issue about retailers. Um, so the thing with retailers is that from, from the union's experience, um, some of them are also manufacturers and consider that they are bound by the modern award um, and the legislative provisions that deal with outwork, but some consider basically that they are a retailer, that they're not in the TCF industry, but they're in the retail industry and don't consider themselves bound as a principle, um, which is unfortunate because these are the people with the economic power who drive what happens in supply chains. Um, and similarly with the Textile Clothing, Footwear and Associated Industries Award, I mean, that award, it's fantastic award. It has very innovative provisions um regulating outwork um in Schedule F. Um, but again, some retailers, when we tried to raise these issues with them, say to us, well, that doesn't cover me because I'm not in the TCF industry, I'm in the retail industry and I'm not a principal. And if you want to go test that point, go off to court, essentially.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we say there still is a role for the New South Wales scheme, which isn't to say that it can't be um reconfigured or improved, um, to bring it up to date. Um, and we still think the mechanism uh which drop, which potentially could drive businesses to the voluntary code still remains, um, still, still remains valid, yeah. Um, so just, I won't go on for too much, but, um, too much more, but um, I think I have read um, the, the other submissions that have been submitted to the committee and I think there are just a number of issues, um, I think it, I'd like to respond to, um. So the submission from the Office of the Modern Slavery Commissioner um raises a couple of suggestions. And, and one is that, I think it's at page seven and page thirty-four of their submission, it suggested that the Anti-Slavery Commissioner could be integrated into the scheme and given power to visit and confidentially speak with vulnerable workers in the TCF supply chains. And to, to, and to engage with people with lived experience. I mean, with respect, we respectfully say that that's, that those proposals aren't all considered um, and not reflective of the significant difficulties involved in firstly identifying and locating TCF outworkers. And secondly, appropriately approaching outworkers in a way that is not, that is not counterproductive. The union has learnt over many decades of trial and error as to the best and most effective way of engaging outworkers in the industry. The level of fear amongst the outwork community is real and should not be disregarded by regulators or any other bodies. Outworkers fear talking to authorities, um, they fear a loss of work um, if they speak up about the conditions, they fear about exposure within their communities because sometimes the people engaging them is someone from their own community. Um, sometimes there's visa concerns or fear of deportation in some instances. And from the union's perspective, inappropriate attempts to, to engage outworkers can actually set back the objectives by years. So in the union's experience, the most effective path that we've found, and again, this is by trial and error, we've made mistakes. Um, we've had to learn um how to do it most effectively is, is through a slow but consistent engagement which builds trust and confidence. And I really can't emphasise that point enough. Um, the union does this through employing bilingual and multilingual um workers. Um, and some of those people ha, have been outworkers themselves. The union, those workers, um, they try and meet outworkers at community events where outworkers are likely to gather. Um, and over time, the union has developed um, specific communication strategies in, in language um to try and connect with those people. But certainly if, if engagement is poor or threatening in any way, then outworkers simply will stop talking to you. And not only will they stop talking to you, it'll take you three or four years to get them to talk to you again. Critically, any information that the union obtains from an individual outworker is never used in a way which personally identifies them. Um, and that's to ensure that there's no repercussions from, from other, other participants in the supply chain, including cutting off work for the outworker or otherwise intimidating or, or pressuring them. Um, so when uh, when the union um does its mapping, for example, of a supply chain, it works practically from both ends. So it um, through its engagement with outworkers, it gathers information. Often that will just be, this is the label that I sew on the garments. And we work from the other end, at the top end with the fashion house as well, obtaining documentation. Um, and then we try and map each level of the chain to work out critically how many people work in that chain, under what conditions, um, and how much value and volume they're actually producing, yeah.
I'm just conscious of time as well.
Yes, sorry.
You did say there was a number of, no, you, the information you provide is valuable, which is why I'm very happy to hear. But you did say that there were, you wanted to respond to issues in the submissions, a number of issues in other submissions, and you've just dealt with one from the Anti-Slavery Commissioner. Are there some other issues that you wanted to raise with the other submissions?
Yeah, I think, I can't remember which submission it was, but I mean, I think there was a suggestion that we have the fair, you know, we have the Fair Work Ombudsman as the federal regulator, which is true, we do, that, that regulator is very well-resourced. Um, but again, it's, its activity in the TCF industry is, is quite low. It did produce a number of reports in the mid-two thousands, um. But, I mean, up to that point, they had, from our research, they had never prosecuted one company in the TCF industry for non-compliance. Um, even though this is an industry um where non-compliance is embedded. Um, and look, in fairness to the Fair Work Ombudsman too, um, you know, this, it's difficult. It's a difficult process to try and work out when an outworker, for example, has been underpaid. You have to work out how much they've been paid for peace, you have to work out how much they've done, when they did it. Um, and use a volume and volume method um to then try and equate that to an hourly rate of pay and the award. So it's not straightforward. Um, but, and also, as I've said, engaging outworkers is very, very difficult. So it's, they don't necessarily have all the skills either um to do it properly. But it's, um, I don't think just saying we've got this regulator is sufficient because it, it's not going to solve the problem that we all want to solve, which is to, you know, um, reduce and eliminate exploitation in the industry. Um, look, I, look, I might leave it there and just, and open up for questions, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Um, look, I just would like to just seek a point of clarification about the operation of the accreditation scheme in New South Wales. And in your submission, you referred to, um, one of your recommendations is to amend references to the Home Workers Code of Practice to the ECA, uh, the Ethical Clothing Australia's Code of Practice, comma, including home workers, the ECA Code of Practice. Now, um, so currently in New South Wales, we've got this mandatory code. You're exempted, as I understand it, if you engage in the voluntary accreditation system. Um, is the voluntary accreditation system through Ethical Clothing Australia? Is that the current alternative to the mandatory code in New South Wales?
That's right. So the change of name that we include as part of our recommendations, that was a change of name to the code that was endorsed through the ACCC Determination Process in twenty eighteen.
And has that always been the mechanism?
Yes.
In New South Wales? Okay.
Yes.
So therefore, when we've heard in evidence that there are seventeen businesses in New South Wales that have signed up to the code, that's, that's basically the number, out of um, a hundred, hundred twenty or thirty, we have seventeen?
That's right.
Right, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. So there's no other accreditation scheme operating in New South Wales? This is it?
This is it, yes.
Right. And we have only seventeen businesses currently signed up to it. Okay, thank you. I just wanted that clarified. Thank you, um, thank you for your evidence. And once again, I'm just sorry to bring to a close there, but I'm just, no members of the panel are keen to ask some questions.
Understood.
And I'm going to go to Dr Kane next.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, Ms Wiles, for your submission and evidence. Um, I have a couple of questions. They're a bit, you know, about disparate kind of issues, but um, um, I'll, I'll, I'll start with, in your uh opening statement, you talk about transparency. And I wondered if you could talk a bit more about why transparency is so important in order to, you know, mitigate the risks of non-compliance or slavery in TCF? in order to, you know, mitigate the risks of non-compliance or slavery in TCF?
Yeah, I mean, look, it's for us, for the union, it's really the number one first thing that has to happen because without it, you can't map the supply chain. So you might be able to map some of it, but not all of it. And so the regulation that exists, for example, in the TCF award in Schedule F, it's designed to, it's designed in a way to regulate the supply chain as it exists in reality. So for example, what I mean by that is that it contains a series of cascading obligations from the principal through to contractors, subcontractors, down at the end to the outworker. And so they cascade down so that for each time work is given out, certain, you know, certain reporting and documentation obligations are kicked in. And so without getting the information at each level, the union is unable to identify, as I said, the amount of work that's being done, who's doing it, when it's being done, and under what conditions it's being done. And then unless you can determine that, in terms of firming up contraventions, it's very hard. It's kind of the first thing. And I know that people think, well, you know, do we really need all this documentation? But without it, you actually can't, you can't really know what's going on.
So you can't find out where the workers are being exploited if you don't know where they are?
That's exactly right. You don't even know where they are. Yeah, yeah. And it's interesting in the union's experience, you know, when principals have come to the union, or we've raised issues with them, and then we've subsequently mapped their chain, often they're really surprised about how many people are in their chain. Because they might know, well, I give my work to that contractor over there. Maybe they've given it to someone else. But apart from that, they don't really have line of sight, real line of sight as to what's happening in their own supply chain. Now, some people might say, well, that's quite convenient. And I think for some fashion houses and principals, it is quite convenient. But for others, they were genuinely shocked about how many people were in their supply chain.
Okay. I wanted to ask a bit more, without getting too technical, and I don't know how many other IR nerds are on the committee, but in terms of Schedule F and that information, you were talking about retailers saying, all well and good, but the award doesn't apply to me. So Schedule F by default doesn't apply to me. Could you speak a bit more about that?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, part of what's happened to the industry over thirty, forty years is that there's been really massive concentration of retailers into kind of a handful of major retailers. And I think we all know who they are. So, and as part of that, increasingly, a lot of their production's gone offshore. But they still may retain a small percentage of domestic production. So when we raised issues with them, when we found their house labels in sweatshops, for example, they said, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, but, you know. And then we raised issues about the award and what they should be doing. They say, well, you know, but we're not a manufacturer. We're actually a retailer and, you know.
So by extrapolation then, the value of the New South Wales scheme is that it compels, if a retailer doesn't want to go into the voluntary code, it still compels them to provide information that otherwise we wouldn't be able to get to find out where workers are.
That's right. And that's why the New South Wales scheme, the structure of it is so clever, really. Because, not clever in a ha way, but just clever because it closes down any loopholes for them. And I suppose that's the other thing, this is an industry where if, you know, unfortunately, if businesses can find a loophole, they'll take it. And so people might say, well, you know, it's so over-regulated, but really it's not. It's because increasingly, you know, businesses find models of production to avoid regulation. That's just what happens. And so in context of the retailer, the New South Wales scheme really sort of addressed that very directly.
Could I ask a question? Because already within your evidence, and evidence we've heard already today, there is a bit of a tension, isn't there? Because there are these businesses who have a desire. And you said the inception of the whole thing was conversations with businesses trying to do the right thing, but operating in a context of intense competition with those who don't want to do the right thing. So there's a bit of a tension, isn't there? Because there are groups of businesses, or even when you said you've presented businesses with evidence, they haven't known. And so there is a cohort of business that you've been working actively with for twenty, however many years, that do want to do the right thing. So it's a tension, isn't it, between those good businesses and sort of less ethical?
Well, that's right. And I, look, you know, I think those businesses should be rewarded. I mean, they should be advantaged in some way to enable them to manufacture ethically in Australia and to be supported to do that. Now, there are ways to do that. There are, you know, so you disincentivise businesses who are not ethical. So you put things in place to, you know, ensure that they don't get a leg up because they are unethical. But there's also more positive things that governments obviously can do around procurement policy. You know, local government, state government, federal government. I mean, it's pretty critical. You know, governments are huge procurers of TCF products, enormous power.
And I should, sorry, I should say, we probably shouldn't say unethical, should we? We should say illegal when we're talking about businesses that engage in some of that behaviour down the supply chain. It's not just a question of a choice to be better or not, it's often a choice to just not be legally compliant. Would that be right?
Well, that's right. And if they get caught out, then it's sort of treated like a cost of doing business, really. And it is unlawful. And then the onus is put on the worker or the union or the regulator to then, you know, bring applications or in courts about those contraventions, et cetera. So it's resource intensive. Enforcement is resource intensive. But I suppose in this industry, it's two things. If I had to think about it, transparency of the supply chain is the critical thing and the enforcement piece is the other. Because without both of those things, exploitation will return.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms Wiles, for your opening remarks. My first question was going to be to ask you to respond to the other submissions. So I really appreciate you taking us through those. I guess I wonder, in terms of, in terms of the sort of funding and the resourcing of the compliance and outreach officers or the outreach officers, I wonder, talking about the funding of that programme, recognising that there is some kind of service agreement that exists between the union and Ethical Clothing Australia, there's a need to look at the fact that in Victoria, Ethical Clothing Australia is funded by the Victorian Government. There's no funding coming from the New South Wales Government. How do you see the sort of specific resourcing of that very unique and critical role of those outreach officers fitting into that sort of the need to be resourced and funded adequately? Do you see that as being done something through the overall scheme? Or are there examples of governments seeing the specific role that unions play and then funding a service or a support directly to the union around that?
Look, I think historically, a bit of both. Like I know in Victoria, in the early two thousands, I think, I can't remember exactly, but there was a project around resourcing the union to try and engage outworkers. Because the union had done a national phone-in, I think, in the late nineties. And was kind of shocked about how many people rang in and the extent of exploitation. And I think there was a bit of follow-on from that. But look, apart from that, it's, you know, the union itself engages its own bilingual workers and has done for a long time. But in terms of the capacity to actually have a proper programme consistently, it really is dependent on having sufficient funding to support that work. Yeah. Because it's hard work, it's slow work, it's, you know, it's painstaking work. Incredibly skilled workers who, you know, go way and beyond to try and engage with our workers and bring them into the fold, if you like. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And I guess it's very different to other industries where the kind of people who are being unionised are not being paid at rates where it's then funding the union to be able to do that. So there's a need to find other ways through.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. Great, thank you. Can I ask in relation to, you talk about how, and we've heard about sort of how we might strengthen the current scheme and code. I wonder, do you have thoughts, and particularly to your point around both the transparency piece and ensuring adherence and compliance? Do you have thoughts on what the committee could recommend in relation to strengthening the code? From a, I guess, recognising and knowing the Chair is very interested in the lack of pickup in New South Wales, what could be done, what could be done to, I guess, address that? To require there to be more of a take-up that isn't a voluntary thing? Or do you think that that undermines the model of a multi-stakeholder engagement? How do you see those two things coming together?
Well, I think, you know, the New South Wales scheme, it's, for whatever reason, and I can't really enlighten you on why, but it has fallen into disutility to some extent. And clearly, you know, there's probably multiple reasons for that. But it needs to, somebody or some agency needs to have carriage of it. It needs to be a priority. I think you asked an earlier question whether that was the Industrial Relations Department. But it does really need to be a priority, it needs to be driven. I think the multi-party stakeholder part of it is important because, you know, businesses need to be on board. Those parts of the industry that want an ethical industry and are committed to it, they need to be, they need to be part of that conversation and part of that process. Because, you know, they have contributions to make as to the best way to have a kind of sustainable industry in Australia, or in New South Wales, and which can operate on an ethical basis. So there's that. It's, you know, the architecture of, that supports the New South Wales scheme, if it's to be retained, that has to be obviously enhanced. Then in terms of Home Workers' Code, and obviously I've said that I'm on, you know, I'm a member of the committee. But if you really want to drive participation in that scheme, then again, you know, the New South Wales Government, it's up to them to fund it. Maybe in conjunction with strengthened procurement policies, which is what the Victorian Government did, with having the Ethical Register, for example. Yeah. And again, part of that was to reward companies that basically are committed to producing ethically in the space.
Yeah, great. Can I just ask, obviously the union has a specific role to play in terms of being able to access and have connection to workers. Are there currently any barriers in terms of union access to those workplaces or other things that are impeding the ability for your outreach workers and the audits to be taken place? Or do you have the access that you need?
Do you mean legally or?
Yeah, sorry, not in terms of individually problematic workplaces, but within the legal framework.
Well, federally, in the Act, there is, apart from general right-of-entry provisions, there's TCF right-of-entry provisions, which were enhanced as part of the 2012 reforms. And they do allow the union to investigate breaches of the holes of Schedule F of the award, including at each level of the supply chain. And also to obtain documentation where suspected contraventions are being asserted. So that regime, that right-of-entry regime's pretty solid. In terms of, I guess, so we can use that right-of-entry in New South Wales, obviously, as part of the federal scheme. So probably nothing specific that I can think of off the top of my head.
Thank you. And just in relation to that, then, going back to your comments in relation to the Anti-Slavery Commissioners submissions, what do you see in terms of the barriers or the challenges that the union would have in accessing that despite the fact you have sort of strong legal protections to access those rights versus what might be the case if the Anti-Slavery Commissioner was attempting to do that?
Well, I think under the Modern Slavery Act, I mean, there's sort of some qualifications anyway. One is obviously the annual turnover of businesses that are bound by it. And also, I think that the Modern Slavery Commission is not really empowered to take up individual grievances, for example. But again, I mean, they're not subject experts. And so I guess our concern is that unless they brought in experts or people that really understood the industry, it could be counterproductive.
Thank you. It's good to get that on the record, so I appreciate it. Thank you. And then the final question I had is, because it does intersect a lot with, obviously, people finding themselves in exploitative or high-risk workplace settings is in relation to both pressures around housing and visa risks. And I wonder, are there any thoughts, and happy for you to take this on notice, if there are any thoughts around what the state government might be able to do in relation to other reforms or changes that would mean it would make it more reassuring to people who are outworkers to speak up about their conditions? We've heard evidence in the context of Modern Slavery Act review that a lot of people don't want to speak out on their situation because they're at fear of risk of their visa breaches. Or the reason they get into it in the first place is because of insecure housing or housing needs. I'm interested to think, given we have the ability to look at the state government's role beyond just industrial relations, what is it that we could be doing in other areas, in other departments, in other parts of legislation to look at strengthening up offers to people in insecure work to allow them the space to be able to come forward? So I'm happy for you to comment now or to take on notice any other changes you think might, or maybe speak with the outreach officers around sort of what reassurances might help them to be able to say, for example, look, this, you know, if we do this, then you have access to temporary accommodation. Or if we do this, then you have access to this or that or the other that may assist within using the other resources of the state rather than in an industrial context?
Yeah, no, it's a really good question. Look, I'll probably take most of that on board, on notice. But, I mean, one of the things that the union was a part of some years ago was when working with outworkers, one of the things that was expressed a lot was issue around training and moving into more secure work or more high-paying work. And so I think this is in Victoria, the union collaborated with RMIT to basically encourage outworkers, for example, to be trained as pattern makers and designers, pattern making, designing, production. And then a group of outworkers did go through that process, which meant that with that skill, they could get better paying work. And because there was such a need for pattern makers, for example. And that was done in a culturally sensitive way, and there were interpreters involved, et cetera. So I think training is critical. I think a number of the submissions have really pointed to the fact that, you know, many outworkers don't know what's available to them. They don't know how to access training and support. And obviously, anything that's proposed needs to be in a culturally sensitive way and something that they feel like they can take up. Look, some outworkers want to continue working at home, but some don't. They would prefer to have alternative work, either within the industry or in another industry.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And maybe I just give a shout out to the Social Outfit, which is in the election of Newtown, do incredible work, exactly that, providing those kinds of, there you go, love it, love it. But yeah, I think it's a good example. And maybe it's good for us to think about what some of the other examples of where that's happening well could be put in. So thank you, I appreciate it, Ms Wiles.
Thank you very much. Mrs Ayad?
I'm fine.
And Mr Borzac?
I'm fine, thanks very much.
Dr Kane, do you have any further questions?
I don't, thank you.
Well, I think, just one observation, just for clarification from me as well. So you mentioned, and a previous witness mentioned, that businesses may choose to go offshore. And of course, this doesn't apply, this scrutiny of the supply chain and the work of the council, sorry, the work of Ethical Clothing Australia, the unions applies to domestic manufacturing and outworkers and so on, has no reach beyond the shores of Australia. I guess, is there a risk? I guess, is there a risk that will drive manufacturing offshore? I guess that's always been there when enforcing, it really isn't an excuse. But what are the risks associated with that? Does work continue to be driven offshore? And is that something we need to be taking into account?
Look, I think, you know, the process of offshoring, I think we're probably in our fifth decade now since the reduction, progressive reduction in tariffs. It's been a very long process. You know, it's almost like any business that was ever going to go offshore is already gone, pretty much. And in fact, there is kind of a move back to onshoring to some extent because the industry is changing and there's issues around quality. And I think this was exposed during the COVID period about sovereign capability. And look, there's always sort of parts of the TCF industry that needs to be here around, you know, defence apparel, for example, around security issues. And some parts of the industry, it's just not really feasible to go offshore around school uniforms. Most of that's still produced here, not all, but... So this is always the question, isn't it? Well, if we regulate here, will they just push people overseas? I think, I think if a business has made the decision to go offshore, they've already made it. And I don't think the level of regulation, which really has been now in place for many, many decades, is going to change their view. And we have to acknowledge that the domestic TCF industry is part of a global supply chain. And, you know, the issues that we face here, they're replicated globally, as we all know, across the world, Southeast Asia and Africa, parts of Latin America. So I think, look, on a positive note, I think there are things that governments and organisations can do to support the local TCF industry. And as I said, to reward those parts of the industry that really do and are committed to staying here and, you know, producing their goods and garments ethically. But I understand your question.
And I'll just add that I think that the focus on supply chains globally in terms of modern slavery is an important part of this discussion, that it brings a scrutiny beyond Australia. And you mentioned earlier the importance of rewarding firms that operate ethically. And I think highlighting good work and good production within Australia just strengthens the Australian brand, if you like, in a national sense. So I think there's an opportunity there. So I don't think we should, I wasn't trying to suggest that in any way changed what we're doing here. It was just really to get your thoughts on that and the thoughts on where that's up to in terms of offshoring. So I appreciate that very much.
Can I just add one thing too? I mean, I think consumer sentiment has also changed. There's quite a strong consumer movement around ethical, sustainable clothing manufacture now. And I think that's only going to grow because everyone understands that the consequences of fast fashion are not only bad for the environment, they're also usually bad for the people making the clothes. And so, yeah, look, you know, despite probably sounding a bit negative, I'm actually quite optimistic about the TCF industry here. I think it has got a future and I think it can be supported. And in that, workers can have decent jobs and make a living from making good quality clothes here.
And I think there is an op, and also I think your point about trying to reward businesses that do the right thing, we have an accreditation scheme in place. And maybe in the context of discussions around global slavery, there is an opportunity to do that as well, to be honest. And it only comes about by emphasising the scheme and then encouraging businesses to comply with it, and then rewarding that, recognising that. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity, yep.
No, no, thank you very much for taking your time. We may, we will now bring this part of the hearing to a close and we will resume at 1:45. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome back. My name is Dr. Joan McGurran, Chair of the Committee. So, welcome Ms. Rizzo this afternoon. I wonder if you could please state your name and position, title, and swear either an oath or make an affirmation, please.
Certainly. My name is Marina Rizzo. I'm the Executive Director of the Industrial Relations Branch of the Premier's Department, and I will take an oath.
Thank you.
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Would you like to start by making a short statement?
Yes, I would like to do that. Thank you.
Okay.
First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to appear at the hearing, and I'd like to also acknowledge the important work of this committee. My name is Marina Rizzo. I am the Executive Director of the Industrial Relations Branch at the Premier's Department. I've held this role for approximately four months. Prior to this role, for a period of almost two years, I performed the role of Director of the Bargaining and Legal Strategy Team, which sits within the Industrial Relations Branch of the Premier's Department. Before commencing employment at the Premier's Department, I was a solicitor at the New South Wales Crown Solicitors' Office and led the Employment Law and Industrial Relations Practice Group. I was employed at the Crown Solicitors' Office for 25 years. So, that's just some background about me and my expertise. The Industrial Relations Branch at the Premier's Department is divided into four teams. There's Inspectorate, which promotes compliance with industrial legislation by providing information, advice, and assistance to industrial entitlements, relating to industrial entitlements, undertaking industrial inspections, and when necessary prosecuting breaches of industrial law. The Public Sector Industrial Relations Team advises and supports New South Wales Government agencies on public sector industrial relations issues. The Policy Team advises the New South Wales Government on industrial relations policy. And the Bargaining and Legal Strategy Team provides support to agencies across the sector in bargaining. At the outset, I would like to highlight that the Industrial Relations Branch regards its role as regulator of New South Wales industrial relations, legislation, and instruments as serious and important, and that it seeks to create a compliance culture across our jurisdiction. The Ethical Clothing Trades Extended Responsibility Scheme, which I will continue to refer to as the scheme, was introduced in 2005 pursuant to the Industrial Relations Ethical Clothing Trades Act 2001. And that was as a result of key recommendations made by the Ethical Clothing Trades Council of New South Wales. The council was constituted under the Act and was comprised of business, government, and employee representatives. The scheme imposed and imposes reporting obligations on retailers and suppliers in relation to outworkers in the TCF industry to ensure the transparency of the contracting process in the clothing supply chain, with the objective of ensuring that outworkers in the clothing trades receive their lawful entitlements, enforceable under the Clothing Trades State Award and the Industrial Relations Act 96 of New South Wales. The reporting obligations aimed to capture information about where production work is taking place and who is undertaking that work. Sorry, the reporting obligations aimed to capture that information. The New South Wales Industrial Relations, which was then part of the Department of Commerce and the Textile Clothing and Footwear Union of Australia, were named as co-regulators under that scheme. The scheme was put in place in recognition of the exploitative nature of outworker work arrangements and the difficulties of regulating that complex subcontracting supply chain arrangement, and that often has a migrant, ethnically diverse, and scattered workforce. At the time of the scheme's commencement, there was some active compliance activity undertaken by the then Office of Industrial Relations. As a result of preparing for this inquiry, and it's part of my new role at the Premier's Department in the Industrial Relations Branch, it's become apparent to me that there hasn't been proactive compliance action by New South Wales Industrial Relations during the course of the last probably 15 years. I haven't been able to locate records which set out the reasons why decisions may have been taken in that regard. You can't, however, look at that decline in compliance work in isolation. The industrial relations landscape in New South Wales underwent a dramatic transformation after the commencement of the scheme in 2005, most notably as a result of the state's referral of industrial powers to the Commonwealth in 2009. In very short summary, this meant that the framework which regulated and enforced the industrial entitlements of outworkers actively transferred from the New South Wales jurisdiction to the federal jurisdiction. These changes paved the way for national employment standards, special protective provisions in the Fair Work Act, and the enactment or the making of the Textiles, Clothing, Footwear and Associated Industries Award. The TSCF, CCF Award provides an avenue for individual outworkers to enforce their rights and their employer's obligations with the assistance of the Fair Work Ombudsman or their union as necessary. It's likely, it's probable, that a significant reason for the lack of compliance action was the creation and implementation of the National Workplace Relations Framework, which provides protections to TCF outworkers. Changes in organisational structures, industry dynamics, and the passage of time have also resulted in compliance activities being more focused around long service leave, entitlements, and those employers and employees that remain in the New South Wales jurisdiction. It ought to be noted that another element of the national regime is the Ethical Clothing Australia Code of Practice, the voluntary code, which requires domestic retailers to provide regulators with information about where clothing work is being performed. But we know, and we've heard this morning, that engagement with that voluntary code is low. I note that the terms of reference for this inquiry refers to the scheme's ability, in either its current or in an expanded form, to address modern slavery. Whilst the nexus between industrial non-compliance and modern slavery on the continuum of exploitation is beyond doubt, my expertise doesn't extend to a nuanced understanding of the characteristics of modern slavery. It's just not in my bailiwick. As such, I'm not best placed to speak to the risks or benefits of the scheme as it might pertain to modern slavery. I note that, having read the submissions and heard the witnesses here, there are people with much better expertise able to assist the committee on that matter. However, I will note that whilst the scheme's objective of ensuring that outworkers in the clothing trades receiving their lawful entitlements has in large measure been superseded by developments in the federal jurisdiction, the committee should note that the scheme continues to provide an important mechanism to mandate the collection of really important data about high-risk supply chains, the numbers and location of outworkers, and other related issues. This needs to be considered in particular, given the context of the lack of powers provided under the Modern Slavery Act of 2018. There aren't any powers under that act to compel the production of such critical information.
That's interesting.
Outworkers have been subject to significant exploitation because of the invisibility of the workforce and the complexity of the supply chains. The scheme obliges retailers at the top end of the supply chain, amongst other matters, to collect and provide key information, give undertakings about the use of outworkers in the manufacture of clothing. It's really critical. It's critical information, it's critical data for those with expertise in preventing and resisting modern slavery. I have met with my inspectorate team. We are actively considering how we commence collecting and sharing this information under the scheme. It's important, as there appears from my review of the submissions here in the evidence presented to the committee, that there is a dearth of data available about this workforce. Within the inspectorate team of my branch, of the branch of the Premier's Department, within the inspectorate, there's a team that's currently managing compliance activities in the private sector supply chains pursuant to the New South Wales Industrial Relations Guidelines in the Building and Construction Procurement Space. We will be looking to expand the scope of that team's work to include work under the Ethical Clothing Trades Extended Responsibility Scheme. I'm advised and understand that that work can be undertaken within existing allocated resources. I look forward to considering the recommendations of the committee and where appropriate implementing any decisions of government that might arise from those recommendations. And once again, I thank you for the opportunity to appear and hope that I can assist.
Thanks very much, Ms. Rizzo. That was great. Thank you very much. I'll start the questioning if I can. I noticed in the submission, there's reference to the fact, and I quote, "Since referrals, powers, and the making of the TCF award, the scheme now appears to have very limited practical utility in terms of enforcing the paying conditions of outworkers in the manner originally intended at its inception." And I know you've spoken about the importance of data collection, and I note your comments in that regard, and I'm sure we'll come back to that. But just on this issue of the utility in respect of industrial awards, we heard this morning that the intention of the original scheme was to actually prevent non-compliance with a range of industrial relation instruments, not just the TCF award. And it was also to develop a co-regulatory model that would, again, prevent non-compliance with awards, which was particularly important in the context of what was referred to as fissured workplaces, so that there was not a direct employer-employee relationship within these supply chains, that retailers would contract, and the terms of the contract would have an influence on an employee's terms and conditions down the supply on an employee's terms and conditions down the supply chain. The retailer wasn't, in fact, the employer in that circumstance. So it was, it was a space in which, if you like, compliance with the awards, very difficult to enforce as per the usual, my interpretation, as per the usual model of industrial relations. So just in the light of those two remarks, the importance of, the importance of ensuring compliance with a range of industrial relations instruments, not just the TCF award, and also the importance of a mechanism of improving compliance in these, as I say, fissured workplaces, I think that's the phrase. Could you reflect on the comment about the limited utility in the submission in that respect?
So, yes. The framework that now has been established in the federal, in our federal jurisdiction covers and prescribes the enforcement of those workplace entitlements, which are now clearly provided for under the modern award in addition, and in addition to protective provisions that are set out and stipulated in the Act. So in that, with that, in that respect, yes, there is limited, there is a limited capacity for us in the New South Wales jurisdiction to undertake compliance action in that regard, in terms of, in those instruments. I do pause and do reflect to look at, though, the additional objectives that have been set out in clause three, two of the scheme that set out other outcomes that the scheme will promote and ensure that remain relevant. And I'm happy to read those.
Yes, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. So these provisions are set out in clause three, subclause two, and that clause is entitled objectives of the scheme. Subclause two states that the code will aid in monitoring the use of outworkers in the manufacture of clothing products for retail sale within New South Wales. And the code will prescribe practices and standards that will aid in compliance with and prevent avoidance of reference to the state award but other industrial instruments with respect to engagement and performance of work by outworkers in the supply of clothing products for retail sale within New South Wales. The code will prescribe reporting practices and conduct, and conduct to prevent the use of legal structures and other commercial arrangements as a means of avoiding the payment of remuneration and other lawful entitlements to outworkers in the clothing trades. The code will also facilitate and complement initiatives by the Government of New South Wales to prevent circumvention and contraventions of laws regarding the employment conditions of outworkers in the clothing trades, and complement and encourage compliance with the outworkers' code of practice by signatories to that code. So, yes, strictly in terms of the enforcement of the industrial entitlements, that rests in the federal jurisdiction, but there are a number of very important objectives that remain independent of that primary objective.
In addition.
And I'm sorry, I hope I've answered that question.
That's exactly, thank you for that answer. That clarifies it, and that's in, of course, in addition to the importance of collecting data, which you've referred to already. So.
Yes.
Yes. So thank you very much. I do have other questions, but I'm now going to go to Dr. Kane.
Okay. So I just want to, thank you, Ms. Ritso, for appearing. So I just wanted to, to clarify. So in that objective section, so we've got the first one, which is arguably the one that, you know, seems a bit dated because it refers to state award, but the second, the second objective that you've just read out, part B talks about prescribing practices and standards that will aid in compliance and prevent avoidance of that state award, which, you know, things have changed, but other industrial instruments. So even though the state doesn't have an enforcement capacity, other industrial instruments as, as defined by this scheme talk about any jurisdictional instrument. So while there isn't any capacity to enforce, and not, I don't think anyone here is suggesting we try and take back our powers, but it does say that, that the practices and standards and what this scheme will try and do is to promote compliance with that federal instrument. That's correct, isn't it?
Well, yes, but I want to just check the definition of other industrial instruments. I did check it before, in my preparation of coming here today, and I just, before I answer that, I just want to be absolutely certain.
You can take, I mean, you can come back to it if you like.
Shouldn't take me too long. But yes, I, that's, that's my recollection.
Okay.
And I will correct the record if.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Um, I wanted to ask a little bit about, about the actual compliance powers that you do hold. Keep, I'm very conscious of the, of the differences between the jurisdictions. But in a section of the code, it does talk about the compliance powers. I think it's eight. Well, I don't think it's eight. It's here. It's eight compliance with the code. And it talks about the, I guess, the role of the Industrial Relations Act and the role of inspectors. And I just wondered if you could, because we're trying to grapple with who's responsible for what. So what would be the role of, what could an inspector do, and what if non-compliance, I guess, with providing that information that we've said is so vital, what, what's the, what would potentially be the role of an inspector under the IR Act?
So let me begin by saying, we do have inspectors that are duly appointed under the Industrial Relations Act that form part of the inspectorate in the Industrial Relations Branch of the Premier's Department. Their role would be multifaceted. It would begin by engaging with the relevant stakeholders, which would include retailers, employee representatives, business, business representatives, undertaking an education piece, informing them about the, the code. It would be to educate about the requirements, making those requirements public on our website. It would be collating that data. We have access to sophisticated programs that do that. They would be engaging also with the Anti-Slavery Commissioner and with the Federal Ombudsman. And there are mechanisms within the code to provide that information so that, when necessary, enforcement action, if required, could be taken in the federal space.
Ah, okay.
Yes, there are mechanisms. So this is not a right, there isn't a means to provide that information directly, but there are avenues which we could undertake to provide that information. So there are means of providing that data.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's really interesting. Thank you. I've got more, but I'm happy to keep.
Ms. Leong, have you had one?
Thank you. We'll go, and then we'll go back around. Thank you so much, Ms. Ritso. I, I wonder, and it's really helpful to get you to outline sort of where in the, in the branch it sits and who's responsible for what, and to hear that there is going to be a, an increased focus on this in terms of working to, to look further at, to, as to how the, the scheme is, is used, but also who's responsible for it, because it has been one of the things we've been nutting out. I guess I was, I was curious to, to have an understanding of what you see, if you see that is the extent, so in a sense, sorry, the team you referred to was, I think, the, the existing team that has a focus on building and construction, potentially taking on compliance, taking on looking at ethical clothing and this scheme. Beyond that, what do you see as, what do you see as the sort of the role of the IR branch if, if the scheme was to be, to use the phrase used earlier, resuscitated?
So.
And I guess that, to go to that, I, I'm curious of whether or not you have any insights or details about the, the council, and whether, because I think there are differing views as to whether the purpose of the council was to establish the existing framework we have under Ethical Clothing Australia and other stuff, or if there is an ongoing role for the council.
I'll just write some notes.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm a good one for four questions at once when the chair says I can have one.
I think you've got two there.
Yeah, just two. See, it's measured, measured, reasonable.
The council and the work.
Yeah, so work beyond, I mean, it sounds like there's, some of that is already underway in, in the terms of you taking on the role, but I wonder what else do you see as capacity to be able to strengthen that responsibility?
So what I think is key with reenlivening that work, resurrecting that work, would be key engagement and collaboration with the Anti-Slavery Commissioner.
Yep.
And the role that he has under his act to combat the effects and risks around modern slavery with the information that we'll, we'll be able to collate. That's, that's number one. It's also strengthening and participating actively in discussions with the Federal Ombudsman in terms of potential breaches of industrial instruments. But the great benefit, I think, is that we'll potentially be able to access data that just isn't around at the moment, that will potentially probably expand on the work and the objectives set out in clause two and, and the functions of the Anti-Slavery Commissioner under his act. Because as, as I referred to, in my opening statement, there's just a dearth of information. So I think that's the main, one of the, the additional role that can be done here with reenlivening that work, strengthening those relationships with those very key stakeholders in the modern slavery and industrial relations space. The purpose of the council is set out in the Industrial Relations Ethical Clothing Trades Act two thousand and one, and I, I can go to that, but.
It's just about the, it's just about the, the, the details of what the council is as to, if we have any idea about.
And it sets out.
Whether or not we think that it needed to continue and where we think that's fallen down, if we think that the, the act requires it to continue. I'm just very curious about things that are supposed to exist that don't.
So that will be a matter for government policy. There are mechanisms in the act, they exist, the act is, is live, there are means for that council to be reconstituted.
Yep.
It will need to be reconstituted if the scheme's going, the code is going to be amended, extended, not sure, that'll be subject to the decision of government.
Yeah.
It will be a requirement before the scheme, for the scheme to be amended or extended for that council to be reconstituted, and that's an available mechanism under the act. And I'm very happy to take the committee to those provisions.
Yeah, so just, I guess what I would be interested in is the, is the context of, if you could give some details to, because obviously, well, not obviously, it appears that the act requires the council to exist. I think it's pretty clear that the council doesn't currently exist.
That's right.
It's unclear, I think it's unclear as to why the council doesn't exist or when it stopped existing. I don't believe there was a sunset clause on the, on the council. Therefore, I guess I'm curious as to, Ms. Ritso, how you would, who you see as responsible for re-establishing the council. Is it the minister? Is it, is it another sort of, where does that sit? So who, who in a sense is responsible for ensuring that the council exists if we were wanting to recommend that it be re-established?
Because it's a statutory body. I'd have to go to terms of the legislation.
Okay, yeah.
And.
And I'm happy for you to take that on notice.
I'll take that on notice.
It would be really helpful, just thinking down the track in terms of where we're at and making recommendations. I think there's a lot of lack of clarity as to why it, it stopped existing, but at the, at the very least, we could get some clarity on, on where we think or who would be responsible to be recommended to re-establish it if that's the way the committee so chose to go.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And look, I, I suspect the term, the, the council laps, the, the appointments are made on a three-year basis.
Yes, yeah.
But yes, yes.
Great, thank you.
I'll take that question on notice.
So Mrs. Ayed, would you like, can I just follow up on Ms. Leong's question there? So you take it on notice about the question as to why it stopped existing and also what precisely needs to happen for it to be reconstituted. But you did make a comment there that it will need to be reconstituted.
This is interesting.
And could you just go over that again? You said it will need to be reconstituted if we are to, and I think essentially, as the phrase has now become current, resuscitate the scheme. Medical practitioner, I'm in familiar territory with.
I like the re-enliven that you use. Maybe it sounds slightly lesser, but you prefer the medical, you prefer the medical term, doctor.
Thanks.
To answer this, I will need to go to, to the act, and it won't take me too long. But section seven of the act sets out the functions of the council, and one of those No, it is in here because I've. I'm sorry, I might need to take that on notice because I can't, I don't want to.
No, that's.
Take your time. But there's a provision, I recall reading a provision in that act that requires a council to.
Makes sense.
It makes sense, the council, council has a function, so.
And I'm sorry, I can't locate it.
That's, that's, I'm happy for you to take that on notice. I'll now go to Dr. Kane.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thanks very much, Ms. Ritso. I'm sorry, we're putting you on the spot with very, very specific things because, in a good way, you've come at the end, so we've also collected a whole lot of questions that, that we didn't start with necessarily, that we're now landing at your feet. One of the questions I wanted to raise, again, goes to the objectives of the code, and I guess it goes a bit to the resource question. So the last, the last objective you read out, so objective is three, and then part two E says that the, the scheme is about complementing and encouraging compliance of the Home Workers' Code of Practice. So encouraging retailers to sign up to the voluntary code. And of course, part of the, it would seem from the evidence we've heard today and from the construction of the scheme, that the scheme was largely intended to push retailers into, and others in the supply chain, into that voluntary code. So it's a little bit hypothetical, but looking ahead, you talked about the work that there will be to sort of educate, because, you know, it's there, educate, to set up the stuff to gather data, that kind of thing. But looking ahead, isn't it possible that because the voluntary code is indeed probably preferential to, to a lot of the potential signatories, that actually the, that work won't necessarily stay with your team, that it might actually be taken over by the work that the code does in actually going out, they actually, ECA actually goes out and audits. So it might be that there's a sort of temporary increase that might, over time, be managed through work with ECA?
Most certainly.
Right, okay. Okay, I just wanted to check that I was getting that. Right, okay. Thank you. That's me for now.
Ms. Lee?
Thank you. And I might, if I can, just turn to one of the recommendations specifically around looking at potential for strengthening state and. potential for strengthening state and even local government procurement policies in line with this, and I, and I wondered if you could provide any thoughts, obviously, it's a, it's a government political, it's a, it's a political decision in terms of taking that, but I wonder um, how you would see or where you would see um, the work sitting or the responsibility for that sitting. Either with, from a perspective of where we're at in terms of this sitting within the Industrial Relations Branch of the Premier's Department and the ethical clothing scheme sitting in that context, versus the idea of obviously procurement sitting outside of that ministerial responsibility, and I guess I'm asking because again, on the idea of, of this committee looking forward to sort of um putting recommendations for how we would strengthen these things. I, I'm interested in your, in your thoughts on, on how something like that would, would take place. Because obviously, within the Modern Slavery Act, there's certain requirements around how that is done, but it doesn't exist currently in terms of government's responsibilities.
I'm probably not in a position to comment about that.
Okay, no problem.
In the absence of consulting with um other areas in government, that would be better placed to kind of provide their views about
Mm-hmm.
procurement and those other related matters.
Okay, yeah, no problem, that's fine, thank you, and thanks, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I was just very curious. The other one was just in relation to the recommendations around the, the supply chain database and looking at that. Is that something that you would see would be a responsibility of, of the Industrial Relations Branch to be responsible for, and what resourcing would be needed to, to do that to the level that you think would be um, at a standard necessary?
So yes, it would be part of the function of um, collating that data.
Yeah.
Um We are resourced to do that work.
Okay.
Um, whether that analysis would be to the level that, for example, the Anti-Slavery Commission would satisfy the work, the more nuanced and sophisticated work of the modern, of the Anti-Slavery Commissioner. I can't comment on, but certainly there would be absolutely a degree of analysis that we would undertake.
Great, great, and I'm happy for you to take this on notice, but it would be really great to know, because we've heard some um, submissions and some evidence around expanding to other potentially high-risk um, industries. And it would be really great to get, and obviously you've mentioned in terms of the, the building and construction. Building and construction space, we have reference to um, cleaning, to, to other areas that I, we know are high-risk, it would be great to get potentially some indications of what kind of data you would have either through your inspectorate or through the policy team. As to where you're identifying potential high-risk industries and what monitoring could be done of those that would allow us to sort of look at the potential expansion into other areas.
Yeah, I, just to follow up with that, Ms Whitso, perhaps you could provide on notice any information on how uh, priority areas, you know, how you prioritize areas in terms of vulnerability. Any methods that you currently have in that compliance team?
Yeah, and maybe just for a bit of context, part of the, the consideration of whether or not there are certain, if we, if we take the idea of there being a sort of the spectrum of there being exploitative workplaces and then the risks of modern slavery. Whether or not there's ways to be sharing potential sort of hotspots or, or risk spots at a level that could be looked at where the Anti-Slavery Commissioner could potentially be identifying those and they could be put back into a, into a, another way, but it's unclear what data exists and what information is out there to be able to feed in to, to look at those, what those high-risk industries would be. I'd assume gig workers is one, but we can all guess what they are, and it would be really great to have some, some details on what data might exist in government to do that.
Noted, understood, yes.
I, I just want to follow up on the issue of the co-regulatory approach that's contained within the voluntary part of this system. And, and the mandatory codes clearly, well, we've heard evidence the mandatory code's critical to, to encourage people to go into the voluntary scheme. The voluntary scheme itself is, is co-regulatory scre- a scheme, it involves business, which has the advantage of precisely that involving businesses. Um, and it also harnesses, uh, from the evidence, we have heard the expertise of people with lived experience who've worked in that area who work with the union and the union has built up expertise in that area. However, that's all mediated through the Ethical Clothing Association. Um, and they are funded by the Commonwealth and Victorian governments, along with contributions from members who seek accreditation, but they sound fairly modest. Um, I, I guess I'm looking ahead to a space in which, you know, more than the seventeen businesses currently seeking that accreditation do so in New South Wales, as a result of the activity of your department. But, uh, and perhaps you can take this on notice, it seems to me that possibly would need the government to consider a contribution to that council um, in terms of its funding.
I definitely have to take that on notice, and it's a matter of, for government.
I'll just put that on notice though, because um it sounds to me if we are hoping to expand that work, it's only right that there should be a contribution of resources, or alternatively, a mechanism by which that can be funded, so. Thank you.
I do have one question.
Mrs Ayad.
I am going to be thoughtful of time, I just want to know how effective has the New South Wales Ethical Clothing Extended Responsibility Scheme been in collecting and reporting data since its introduction? And in your opinion, are there any improvements which could be made to enhance data transparency and accuracy without burdening businesses?
So, to answer the first part of that question, um it's very difficult to um, comment on this, the potential of the scheme and, and, and the um, ability of the scheme to affect changes in this area. And that's because um, there was active compliance under that scheme initially, and then for various reasons. Um, primarily, I think, relating to um, referral of powers to the Commonwealth, to the federal, to the federal jurisdiction, um, and because of that an adjustment of priorities, um, we just can't comment, it's difficult to comment on the um potential of the scheme to affect those objectives or changes or provide that um insightful data. I think there was a second part to your question, which I forgot.
I think it went to the burden on business about going forward. Potential burdens on business in data collection, I got that.
Yes, correct, so it was essentially what changes can be made to increase the reporting and collection of data in the industry without increasing the burden on, on business?
Well, the, we're part of, part of um, looking at um, this scheme and looking at what needs to be done i- is um looking at the forms that business would need to complete. We would look at streamlining and making those forms as um, accessible and easy to fill out. So we'd be mindful of not increasing you know, um, sort of administrative tasks or creating undue burdens, so we'd be very mindful.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Well, isn't it also the case though that business would have the option of either the mandatory code or else opting for the voluntary code, so they'd have some discretion as to which of the codes suited their business.
Most definitely, that's right, they could.
And I, I think the advantage of a co-regulatory regime is that business has input into that accreditation process as well. Um, and would hopefully gain benefits from the process as well. Uh, but
Yes.
I just might take that as a comment, all right, I think we might. I've got another question, Dr Kane, my apologies.
I can answer that question about um the council and its involvement in any change or amendment to the um, code.
Great.
Um, so, section twelve of the Industrial Relations Ethical Clothing Trades Act 2001. Um, section twelve subsection five. The minister must consult the council and consider any relevant report or recommendation made by it. And B, may consult such other organizations or persons as the minister thinks appropriate before amending or evoking the code. So it was this mandatory component that the minister must consult the council.
Right.
Before any change to the code.
Yes, before amending or evoking the code.
Okay, that's very helpful. Dr Kane, you were going to ask another question.
Last question, uh, it's probably a quick one, and it well, you might have answered it because it was a bit hypothetical. Um, I just wonder, given the change that you mentioned with regards to the um the creation of a single industrial system in Australia and the, and the um, the powers being um ceded essentially to the federal government, was around the time of the code. Is it possible that someone misunderstood the code and how it was applied, given that it on, on a sort of face value reading, it seems to relate to the state award, and it's only sort of as you kind of, um, I mean, it's possible that someone might have, in that change, that big change that went on, that there might have been a sense that that was a state instrument that we leave behind.
I can see how that might have been, might have occurred, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But that's my opinion, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, on that note, I think we'll bring this, uh, part of the hearing to a close, thank you very much for evidence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The secretariat will contact you in relation to uh, any questions on notice. Once again, thank you for appearing today. And on that note, I will bring the hearing for today to a close, I wish to thank committee staff, Hansart, and the members of the committee for their participation. Wish everybody the very best for the long weekend.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.